All right, we're going to get started this morning with an invocation led by Father Richard Stansbury of the Cathedral of Our Lady of Perpetual Hope and Bishop McGinnis, and that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Mark Stonecifer. Please stand as you are able.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the blessings that you have given to each of us, and especially for this holy season of Christmas. Be with our city and our leaders as they discern what is best for this city and its residents. Help us to always remember those who are suffering and have no place to lay their heads, and help us to continue our city to grow and prosper. We ask all of this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Those standing, please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we have a couple of presentations, and I'll make my way to the front for those resolutions found at Okay, Vanessa, why don't you join me up front? Vanessa is the Employee of the Month, and we'd love to learn a little bit more about her, and so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Vanessa Nahar Etcheveria has been a city employee for four years and is an Action Center representative in the Public Information and Marketing Department. And whereas Vanessa serves as a bilingual representative in the Action Center assisting Spanish-speaking residents with local concerns, reporting issues, and providing them with city government information. And whereas Vanessa provides bilingual support to multiple departments including stormwater quality, development services, and public information and marketing to assist with communication between city employees and Spanish-speaking residents. And whereas Vanessa helped Spanish-speaking residents after the November tornadoes by communicating about housing, shelter, debris removal, reporting fraud, accessing immunizations, and addressing food needs. And whereas Vanessa is known for her dependability, extensive knowledge, and positive attitude, contributing to the high-quality service of the Action Center. And whereas Vanessa demonstrates empathy, professionalism, and commitment, embodying the highest standards of service and care. And whereas the council desires to recognize Vanessa Nahar Etcheveria for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Vanessa Nahar Etcheveria, December 2024, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Well, thank you. Well, Vanessa, I would say a pretty high proportion of people who engage with our city are talking to you. So you, for many people, are the face of our city through your work at the Action Center. So thank you for that. We're very grateful. Now, this is a resolution, so I'm going to hand you the mic in a moment, but first, let's see if we can get the votes to pass this. So let's see if there's a motion in a second. There is. Please cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. Passes unanimously. So we'd love to hear a few words from you, Vanessa, and you can even provide it in two languages if you like. But the floor is yours.
I just want to thank City Council and the mayor for presenting this resolution. I see you guys every other Tuesday, and I know you guys do make hard decisions for the interests of your residents, so I appreciate that. I also want to thank my family for being here, Shamika for giving me the opportunity of working in the Action Center. I want to thank all my coworkers, Barbara. I understand what it's like working outside in harsh weather. I understand what it's like waking up at 2:00 a.m. for my previous positions. So I just want to thank everybody for being here. Thank you for being interested and listening to the City Council and their decisions, and it's just an honor to be here today. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Let's hear it for Vanessa. Thank you so much. Well, now we have, if our members of the -- and I always -- I struggle with the formal name of this board, the Community Enhancement such-and-such-and-such-and-such Board. Please come forward, all of you, everybody who came here for this presentation this So the MAPS story, the story of the MAPS penny is known far and wide. What is sometimes less well-known is that there's always been something in between MAPS. There's always been a major initiative that has taken up that penny before and after our major MAPS initiatives, and those initiatives are of no small significance. The one after MAPS for Kids brought us the thunder, and the one after MAPS 3 brought us a major upgrade in our streets. And that has obviously been a perennial concern of our residents, but we have seen through the work of Better Streets, Safer City, as Debbie Miller has told us, an increase in our average rating across the city from 60 to 70, with 70 being considered the national standard for satisfactory, and so this is no small thing. And over these last several years, the people who have been the Citizen Advisory Board, who have provided the stewardship of this particular penny in between MAPS 3 and MAPS 4 are standing up here right now. Their work is coming to an end, as it always does. These are always temporary initiatives, and so we have a little business in this resolution in winding that up, but there's also a moment of appreciation and gratitude that we also wanted to share with these board members today. So with that, I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Resolution honoring the legacy of Better Streets, Safer City, expressing gratitude to the members of the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board, dissolving the board and transitioning any remaining tasks to the City Council. Whereas on June 20, 2017, the City Council of the City of Oklahoma City adopted a resolution setting forth the administrative intent to use a temporary city capital improvement sales tax proposed by City Ordinance Number 25,0751 to construct community and local neighborhood capital improvements, such as street resurfacing, street enhancements, sidewalks, trails, and bicycle infrastructure, to be known as the Oklahoma City Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program. And whereas on September 12, 2017, Oklahoma City residents voted to approve the temporary one-cent sales tax levy supporting the Better Streets, Safer City Capital Improvements Program for 27 months. And whereas on November 7, 2017, the City Council established the Citizens' Capital Improvement Sales Tax Advisory Board to be known as the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board for the purposes of advising the City Council regarding projects proposed for funding from the Oklahoma City Capital Improvement Sales Tax. And whereas in January of 2018, the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board began meeting to discuss potential projects and established criteria to help prioritize projects to recommend to City Council for funding. And whereas the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board recommended $264 million of projects and budgets to the City Council in the following five project categories: street resurfacing projects, arterial and residential, street enhancement projects, sidewalk projects, trails projects, bicycle infrastructure projects over a six-year period. And whereas the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board was seated in 2018 and consisted through the years of Chair Hal McKnight, Jason Johnston, Michael Taylor, Jamie Dunnington, Anthony Carfeng Jr., Jeff Groves, Brooke McGowan, Kasha Egan, Jim Luhu, Brenda Campos Hernandez, Kristin Dalgren, Kim Hickerson, Sandino Thompson, Don Noble, and Steve Dixon. And whereas the dedication and expertise of the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board and its subcommittee members have been invaluable in guiding the planning, implementation, and oversight of the various projects throughout their development. And whereas the legacy of the Better Streets, Safer City Capital Improvements Program includes improving streets through the establishment of infrastructure supporting safer forms of all modes of transportation for the citizens of Oklahoma City. And whereas any remaining tasks and responsibilities that may arise relating to the Better Streets, Safer City Capital Improvements Program shall be transitioned to the City Council, ensuring continuity and progress in meeting the evolving needs of the Oklahoma City community. Now therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and city council of the City of Oklahoma City hereby dissolve the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board with heartfelt appreciation for the dedicated service and commitment of the board to the Better Streets, Safer City Capital Improvement Program. And be it further resolved that any remaining tasks and responsibilities that may arise relating to the Better Streets, Safer City Capital Improvements Program, including any actions necessary to complete projects already approved, and the expenditure of any remaining funds shall be transitioned to the City Council.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you for bearing with us for a few minutes, but if you're going to spend a few hundred million dollars, I think that five minutes of gratitude is deserved. Thank you for your dedication. Obviously, this is volunteer service, and we're very grateful for each of you. Now, I think we'd love to hear a few words from the chair of this Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board, Hal McKnight.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciation to City Council and the mayor for this recognition, also for these meetings that we had could not be done any better with the help of Parks and Recreation, Planning, the city staff, and Public Works. And it was a true partnership of citizens working with these folks to get these projects done, and it's a sense of pride that we stand here today and really appreciate all the help we got.
Excellent. Well, let's thank these great community volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got to pass that. Why don't we go do that? See if we can get a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. All right, now we have some appointments to Board of Adjustment, Civic Center, Historic Preservation, Human Rights, Arts Commission, Zoo Trust, Residential Building Code, Traffic, Trails, and the Port Authority that we could take with one motion, items C through L. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we have item four, items from council, and we have item 4A. This is a resolution declaring an extension to December 31 of next year, 2025, of the penalty reduction program. This is brought forward by the Judiciary Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Stonecifer. Councilman Stonecifer.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The Judiciary Committee met on December 2. We are proposing this resolution which extends the penalty reduction program through December 31, 2025. Joe Bath, Matt Bradley, and I are on the Judiciary Committee. We're very proud of this program through the help of LaShawn Thompson. It's been a real success. Other counties, other cities have adopted this program, and LaShawn sent me an email this morning, Mayor, that says since July 1, 2019, through December 16, 2024, yesterday, the program has closed 13,310 cases. That's took these warrants off the streets with a collection amount of $1,598,000. So on behalf of the Judiciary Committee, we hope you'll support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's see if we can bring that up electronically. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to item five, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, we have the report, the
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, we have the report, the Quarterly Riversport Foundation update. That's in your packet. We don't have a presentation day, but glad to get any answers to questions that you might have. And then we have Claims and Payroll on there. It's all we have.
Thank you. Item 6, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have Items A and B we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 7 are requests for uncontested continuances. On the agenda, we see Item 11B, which is being withdrawn, and Item 11D, which is requested to defer to our next meeting on December 31. Do you have anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, beginning on page 7, Item 11AG, I'm sorry, 9AG. Councilwoman Hammond has requested that we defer this for six weeks to January the 28th, just to allow for some more time for engagement with the neighborhood.
I'm sorry, so this is 9AG, you said?
9AG.
Got it.
So that'll be to January 28. Then on page 14, 11V1, Dilapidated Structures. All of these items that I will read are stricken from the agenda. Item D, Item D is 24 Southwest 44th, to re-notify for a new owner, continuing with unsecured structures on page 14. Item 11W1, Item A, 105 South Allen Street, the owner has secured. Item C, 739 North Ellison Avenue, the owner has secured. Item F, 2918 North Prospect Avenue, the owner has secured. Item I, 1508 Northeast 16th Terrace, the owner has secured. Item L, 525 Northwest 27th Street, to re-notify for additional openings. Item Q, 2236 Southwest 49th Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 2244 Southwest 49th Street, the owner has secured. On page 15, Item 11X1, Abandoned Buildings, again, all stricken from the agenda. Item A, 105 South Allen Street, the owner has secured. Item D, 2918 North Prospect Avenue, the owner has secured. Item L, 2236 Southwest 49th Street, the owner has secured. And Item N, 2244 Southwest 49th Street, the owner has secured. That's all the items that I have.
All right. Well, without objection, that'll be the order. All right. Next up is Revocable Permits and Events. Item A is a revocable permit with Arts Council of Oklahoma City for the Festival of the Arts. And we've got Seth Lewis here to talk about that.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. We're excited to bring the 59th Annual Festival of the Arts back to the grounds of Biscayne Park and here at City Hall Lawn, April 24 to 27. With your support, our sponsors and over 3,000 community volunteers were able to bring this project together, which funds us throughout the year to bring the arts and community together at schools, senior centers, libraries, and parks year-round. This year, we're also excited to bring our emerging artist area, aspiring upcoming artists and our own tent area, after one year of being mentored by previous festival artists, and also our new area, Craters Collective, for micro businesses, crafts, foods, arts and goods as well, and sell them here for us. So we're excited to have that for us April 24 to 27, and seeing you all at the opening ceremonies the morning of the 24th in 2025.
Yeah. Do you usually come this early? I mean, this is really building the anticipation.
We were just so excited for the 59th that I wanted to get here before the end of the year.
Sounds good. Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, good for you checking this off your list before the end of the year, and I'm happy to move for approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, 8B is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Autism Oklahoma to hold Run Lucky on March 9 on West Park Place. And we have Crystal Frost, possible?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. As you know, the Run Lucky for 10 years was for a different organization, and OK Runner took it over four years ago for Autism Oklahoma, and we are so thankful for that. And Autism Oklahoma has been around for 22 years, so any help we can get, we appreciate it. And we are growing. So, we are going to be on March 9 down by Fassler Hall, and this will be our fourth year for Autism Oklahoma. And anybody can sign up on autismoklahoma.org, but we also have a separate website for the Run Lucky that'll kick you over there. So, we hope everybody will come out and have some fun.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
I'm happy to move for approval. Congratulations on 10 years.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll recess the council, and we'll convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have Items A through E we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we'll adjourn OCMPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have Items A through D we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. We'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the City Council, where we are now on Item 9, the Consent Docket. And we have scheduled presentations for Item AU and Items BA and BB. Is there anything else the council member wishes to pull out for a separate comment, question, vote?
Mayor?
Yes?
Item Z, just to hear a little bit more details, please.
Okay.
And I would like to vote separately on Item A.
Item A?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll take them in order, and we'll start there. We'll do a separate motion for Item 9A. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Councilman Stonecypher, have you had a chance to vote? Passes 8 to 1. And now, we are at Item Z. Councilman James Cooper, you wanted to speak to this?
Yes, by inviting our good friend, Director Debbie Miller, to speak to the specifics. I know you sent an email, but yesterday was lots of final grading, so I have not had a chance to see the email that you told me you sent in a voicemail. Could you tell us a little bit more about where these sidewalks are, and then I'll have a follow-up?
Sure. Debbie Miller, Public Works Director. This is Item 9Z. It is a sidewalk project with five different locations. Part of it is American Rescue Act, so we're getting that done. We have got, we actually have several projects. We have two that we're getting ready to advertise for a contractor that go from 63rd along Northwest Expressway all the way over to Mossdeller. So that's quite a ways that we're going. And then we also are going on May Avenue from Northwest Grand. We're doing infill. And then at Northwest Expressway in May, we're going to connect, we're leaving the sidewalks to where we can connect and to what that project is going to provide for pedestrian access. So, and then that will go south down to 47th, and that'll be an infill. And then on Villa and 30th, we're going along 30th from North Penn over to Villa and down Villa all the way to 16th Street with sidewalks and infill. So, and it's not just this one project. There are two other projects that the contract is being advertised. So, this area will get a lot of sidewalk improvements.
Thank you for walking us through those projects. So, this is not at all a critique. This is actually just some clarification, because when I was reviewing the agenda with council staff, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding the geography of this. We're talking about Grand Boulevard on May, up around like Blue 7, Starbucks, Nichols Hills Suburban, Grand Avenue. Am I correct?
Yes.
Going southbound on May?
Yes.
Over the Northwest Expressway Bridge?
Yes.
Past Target, past 50th Street?
Yes.
To where Summer Moon?
Yes. Now, the improvements there at May Avenue, Northwest Expressway will be constructed with that bridge project.
So, we are taking into consideration how the sidewalks north and south of the bridge are going to connect to the new bridge?
Yes, we have included that.
That seems like a lot of work and coordination. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was looking at that. That's a long stretch of sidewalk. And again, that's not a complaint. That's just a lot of sidewalk. That includes, will that be both sides of May Avenue?
It will be on one side.
East or west?
I think it depends on where they're at and what the geography is, but I can get you that information.
That'd be helpful. And the reason why I ask, it's not just because I want, I would like them on both sides, but on the east side of May at 63rd is that horrible, like just slabs of concrete they put there at the French Market that just, I don't know whose idea that was, before our time. But I'm just curious of sidewalks. Like, that's a huge engineering feat and probably costs a lot. And so I'm just curious what our plan is there. At some point, I'd like to tackle that area. I just don't know if the sidewalks are going to be that. So I'd like some clarification on that.
I can provide that.
Thank you. And then, do we have any sense yet of, while I am very grateful for the sidewalks from Villa to Pennsylvania, my predecessor, the late, great Sam Bowman, who passed away in recent years, as you know, one of the resolutions his council approved was sidewalk infrastructure from Villa up to Northwest Classen High School at May Avenue? Like, because Sam had, and so too had the neighbors in Venice and Cleveland, they talked to me frequently about their children walking in the street on 30th to get to Northwest Classen High School, to say nothing of them getting to Taft Middle School around the corner from there. And regardless of whether the infrastructure's there, the kids are walking, and dangerously as their parents and as their councilmen, and it's very well aware. Do we have a timeline yet or any sense of when, remember that resolution said we were going to be, of course, putting sidewalk there, but we were going to put like a little plaque, a little stamp in the ground honoring Sam's legacy there? Because Sam was, as I've said several times, the first council member, you know, really since the Second World War to argue that this council should be investing in sidewalks. So to honor him, that was the plan there. Do we have any sense yet of that connectivity?
That I will have to get back to you on.
And I think that's going to be an important one, too, because we have CSU Youth Services right around the corner there at like around 31st and Cashin. And I'm guessing at some point, some of those kids could better walk from the youth center to, you know, Classen, Northwest Classen High School. So there's really just some delicate work there. I just wanted to kind of get an update on those matters. So, that is all for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to recognize, too, that not just this project, but there's about 10 projects on today that have ARPA funding. And the staff has worked very hard with our engineering partners and contractors to get these designed and bid so that we can meet the deadlines for ARPA. So there's about 10 projects on today. So just appreciate the work that staff has done to get us to that place.
Okay. Next up is AU. We have a presentation on this?
Yes. David Todd, our MAPS Director, will give us an introduction here of the engineers. He'll present the project, the design on this project for youth soccer.
Good morning, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. Today, or this morning, we have a very much anticipated project that includes the Cameron Park and the South Lakes Park Soccer. CEC Engineering has been working on this, and Josh Dougherty is here today to take you through the preliminary report that they're presenting today.
Hello. Good morning. Josh Dougherty with CEC. Thank you for having us here today. As David Todd said, we're very excited to be here. As a little preamble before we get into the presentation, I will say that this project has been a great lessons, a lesson in patience and understanding, and all of the city departments should be applauded for the work that we've had to put in together. It's been a great exercise in collaboration and communication. And MAPS, working with Public Works, working with Water Utilities Trust, along with North Oklahoma City and South Oklahoma City Soccer Clubs, community stakeholders have all had to work together with a common vision, which I think really speaks to and embodies the purpose of MAPS projects. So, with that, we'll present the preliminary report, and I will emphasize that this is the preliminary report. Of course, the next step, if we move forward, is to proceed into full-on design and construction. So you will see evolution of this information as we go forward. So we'll talk about each park separately. We'll talk first about CB Cameron Park, and you see here the list of what we'll be going over. Overall, the project site on the left side of the screen, you see there, it's 110-acre park. This project is going to develop about 70 acres, the remaining 70 acres that have not been touched yet. The park originally opened in the 80s and has had amenities put throughout it, such as walking trails and sports fields and picnic areas. Phase 1 improvements in 2015 added five fields, and those are the five fields to the very north. Under this new master plan, we've got plans for 10 new full-size soccer pitches, two of those being artificial turf, eight grass. We are planning for four additional ones, so 14 fields total. This will have a championship clubhouse, concession and restroom building, bleachers and seedings. And then, of course, all of the requisite infrastructure that is required and circulation, such as parking and sidewalks, which is critical for a facility like this, player and spectator seating. And then we are also making smart decisions to plan for future growth, for training areas, an additional playground, and a maintenance facility. This is the overall master plan. North is to your right. That's 122nd Street bounded on the north. Those five north fields is what was completed in Phase 1, and the remainder of the site to the left is Phase 2, or this phase that we're working on now. And I'm going to show you a series of images that kind of show what is currently planned. This is the central core area. North is now up. You can see the red box there shows the new clubhouse, and then the two darker green fields down on the bottom left are your artificial turf and championship fields. This is that central core area. You've got the clubhouse, concession, restroom building in the center. And then to the south of that, you see a plaza area here, which we'll talk about here in a moment. This is another perspective view of those same improvements. I'll point out these two arrows here. These are for entry signage, wayfinding, sort of create that iconic moment as you start to approach these facilities. This is a concept of what those could look like, trying to play off some of the architectural vocabulary that's already been established on-site. We've got plenty of opportunity here for additional naming rights and such if we want to celebrate other donors at this park. Here is what some of the seating areas throughout the complex will look like. This, of course, is not only for the players on the field, but the parents and family members that bring them there and want to, and need to have a place in the shade to watch. You're starting to see some architectural imagery of the championship clubhouse and some of the surrounding spaces for pedestrian hospitality and circulation. Again, north is to the top of the screen here, and there is that championship clubhouse. But you've also got the seating area. We've got a plaza area here with some berms to allow some folks to play and run off some of that excess energy. And then we've got some covered seating bleachers on both sides of that area. Again, some architectural concepts, trying to pick up on the vocabulary that's already been established on-site. These are preliminary, but this is what we're trying to evolve as we proceed through design here. Here's a concept of what the satellite and concession restroom building might look like. And so then on to South Lakes. So, we'll, same, same approach here for South Lakes Park. We'll go through these same bits of information. It's 160-acre park down at Southwest 119th and Meridian. This project will include about 75 acres. This park opened in two, early 2000s. It has a lot of improvements on it already, and this master plan that we have developed is just taking it further. So, this master plan will include a concession restroom. So this master plan will include a concession restroom building, irrigation upgrades and renovations, additional pedestrian walkways, a redesigned and reconstructed centrally-located clubhouse, and in addition to the maintenance building. Here's the overall plan for South Lakes. North is up. We are primarily looking at the west, the west side of the site here. Some improvements down here at the far south. Here again, in that central core area is the new clubhouse. Some architectural imagery of what that might look like, very similar in concept as far as a program of spaces to what we are doing at CB Cameron. These clubhouses will have, of course, the concession and restroom areas, which are critical at a facility like this, but also medical spaces as well as hospitality areas for those big tournament days where folks need a place to gather inside. We are, if you're familiar with that park, we are pulling the clubhouse closer to the existing drop-off area. It's going to be a little bit, a little bit easier wayfinding, as well as better for pedestrian circulation and ADA compatibility. Architectural concepts of some of the other improvements, satellite concession restroom building, which again are so critical at a facility like this. And then we'll get into the estimates here. We have detailed estimates at the preliminary report stage for both CB Cameron and South Lakes. And so I am not going to read all of these numbers to you, but I will point out at the very top, we have a council-approved budget of $17,831,000, and our current base bid estimate is just under that at $17,823. And you can see down below a laundry list of what that base bid includes. At South Lakes, very, very similar, $6,541,000 and change. And then our proposed base bid improvements come in a little over a quarter million dollar below that. These funding amounts were approved by council back in July. It's a funding split. It was a resolution back in July of this year, which allowed us to then overlay the requirements and the requests from the individual user groups, as well as meeting with the city agencies, to then develop this program of improvements to get it within budget. This is what the overall project detailed cost estimate looks like. Same story here, except what you're seeing on this slide is a number of alternates that the design team has come up with to ensure that we have the ability to ensure that at bid day we can get this project into budget. If we have favorable results, when this project goes out to bid and goes out to market, we will have the ability to pull in some of these alternates if we get favorable results. If not, these alternates can be done at a later time. We've tried to be smart about scheduling these such that we're not redoing or taking out brand-new work to go back and put in any of these alternates. Here's the overall schedule. Here today, presenting the preliminary report. We will then, if approved, move into final construction documents, which are scheduled to be done in May of next year, bidding through June. Construction start after award in August, and then about a 12-month construction period, opening the parks in August of '26. So with that, I will take questions. You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, now we are heading to items BA and BB. We have presentations there?
Yes. Again, David Todd, our MAPS Program Director, will introduce the speaker on these projects. And we also get the update that we had been promised on the annual update on the homelessness projects.
So this is part of MAPS for Homelessness piece of the program. And as part of the agreement with Oklahoma City Housing Authority, they are required to bring an annual report. So that's what we are doing today. And Greg Shin is here to bring you that, a summary of that report.
Good morning. I would like to give you the updates on what we have been able to achieve with the first allocation. This is just a brief summary. It's an overview. So, next slide, please. With the first, through the fifth allocations, with all allocations, our goals were to produce 500 units of supportive housing, 1,500 units of renovated, existing, or newly-built replacement public housing, and then 150 units of workforce housing. Next slide, please. So in this first allocation of $10,762,000, we committed $1 million to, I'm not sure why that top stack there says uncommitted. That's not correct. So the Oak Grove is $1 million to, for 288 units of renovated public housing at the Oak Grove housing site. That will just be a small part of the capital stack. The estimated budget is, overall budget is $66 million. We committed $2.5 million to the Creston Park project, which is on MLK between, between 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th Streets. There's a pre-development fund, which is, recapitalizes. We continually spend that money and put it back in to allocate to projects to get started with upfront expenses. The, the supportive housing project, number one, is the motel conversion at 18, at East Reno and MLK, 1800 East Reno. And that is 76 units of permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless individuals. And then the second supportive housing project is pending. We're working on that location. That'll be about 69 units. And altogether, that's, that's not up to the 200 units that we projected, but we're getting very close there. And that leaves, all the, only money that's not in this capital stack here is the admin money that renews with every allocation request. Next slide, please. This shows you the timeline on the projects. We got the grant allocation in 2023. The first project is Creston Park listed there, which will kick off in middle of 2025. We have a new general contractor on that project, and those team meetings are going on, and we should break ground in the middle of 2025. Oak Grove will be scheduled a little bit later, the third or fourth quarter. Oak Grove will kick off over, across from the Dell Plant on Southwest 15th Street over there. And the Vita Nova Motel 6 conversion, that project is going to design right now. We have script architecture on that project, and we're, we're working on getting that project started in the middle of 2025 also. And we have individual projects that'll be named later on, but the second supportive housing project, as I said, we're negotiating that right now, and we hope that that can kick off in the second quarter of 2025. So you can see whether they're in pre-design, they're in design, or they're moving towards construction there on the timeline. Next slide, please. So these are the current locations. You can see how widespread they are across the community, with Oak Grove being in the bottom-left corner, Vita Nova's in the middle there, along Reno, and then Creston Park up on the northeast side. And other projects will also be widely scattered out throughout the community like that, so that we're not concentrating these dollars in one neighborhood or one, one part of the city. Next slide, please. This shows you a little bit of detail on the supportive housing project at Vita Nova, and it shows that 76 units will be built there, but about 85 people we expect, because they won't, they won't be all single occupancy. We have $3,000, $3 million in MAPS funding, and we're looking at leveraged funds of $12 million for a total project budget of $15 million. And so you can see that the MAPS money only makes up 20% of this project. And that's a little bit higher than the average, where if you look at the total capital stack for all these projects, we're leveraging $163 million with about $8 million in money that's directly allocated to the projects. So that's representative of how we're able to leverage millions and millions of dollars back. So with the first allocation, right now I have the forecast of $163 million leveraged back with $8 million of MAPS money. Next slide, please. A little bit more detail here. This is what the motel looks like currently. It'll be completely redesigned. There'll be many, many amenities here that don't currently exist, like a lot of green space, green space, sound wall barrier to block the noise from I-40, which is parallel to the project. And just an example of some of the funding that we're leveraging back as federal home loan bank funds and, and many other locations, and will be taken care of all the residents that are currently there. There's only 14 remaining from when we acquired the motel, and they'll all be protected under the Uniform Relocation Act, according to HUD guidelines. So nobody will be displaced or become homeless because of this project. Next slide, please. Here's a picture of the pre-existing homes at Creston Park off of MLK. And these homes will all be demoed. You can see with the site view, they're vacant right now. I'm sure you've driven by there, and you can see that they're boarded up. We continuously board those homes up, make sure nobody breaks into them. But this will all be what they call demo, demolition disposition through the HUD process. And we're using $2.5 million in MAPS funds there right now, and the cost of the total budget is projected at $54 million right now. We just, we just did an RFP for the contractor, and we hired McGuff Construction out of, out of Dallas, Texas. They're a very big national firm. Their headquarters are in Minneapolis-St. Paul, but their regional offices in Dallas. That was a competitive RFP, and McGuff was selected. Next slide, please. Oak Grove Apartments also, along Southwest 15th, across from the Dell Plant. That's going to be, go through what they call rental assistance demonstration, which is a HUD, a HUD product, and we're going to use $1 million in the MAPS money there. We've got the, the GOAL financing. We've got the City Economic Development Trust and the TIF funding that's there. And we're going to work with ONQ to put in a commercial site there. We'll demo 18 units, and then we'll relocate those units on the site of the current Oak Grove. So it'll be 270 units of public housing rehabilitation, and then 18 units of new construction on that site. Next slide, please. This is a site map of the Oak Grove Apartments, and you can see in the yellow there. At the top of the, the picture on the right, that is where the ONQ development will be. And within the, within the site map there, you can see the 18 units will be rebuilt, and the people that are living in the 18 units, most of those are vacant right now, but we will be rebuilding those within the site map. Next slide, please. That's all that I have today. Just a brief summary of what, some of the outcomes that we achieved with the first allocation of $10.7 million. I'm happy to take any questions.
I'm curious to hear or have you share, I guess, just for anyone watching or tuning in. You talked about all the other funds you're leveraging for these projects. Can you share what those sources are, even if it's just like a, you know, high overview? Just so folks understand kind of what those stacks are made of and what those other sources, where those other sources are coming from.
Sure. So some of those sources are federal. We have, we have some of the ARP funds, the ARPA funds are committed to this project, also home funds. We have home funds on the Vita Nova project. We also have home funds on the Creston Park project. We have Federal Home Loan Bank on Vita Nova. While we're waiting for that award, we think we're going to get it. We're really close to getting it, as well as we have some permanent financing that we're using on these projects. Actually, Creston Park has 11 different sources, just for that one project. And on the Vita Nova motel conversion, we also have several sources, including the Federal, the Federal Home Loan Bank. We have, we have the Community Development Financial Institution, which is federal-sourced. So we have also private financing from the Arnol Foundation and some of the money that came from the, the rental, the rental assistance money that was awarded out. We got, some of that money was remaining through the, through the Oklahoma Community Foundation, and we were able to get about a million, like a little over a million dollars for that, for the Vita Nova project as well. So if you looked at the capital stack for every one of these projects, it gets pretty dense. We're hoping to do the second supportive project, supportive housing project for MAPS supportive housing with a little less detail and a little less complex mix of funding. But generally speaking, this is what it takes to get affordable housing built in the city right now. You can't do it with one subsidy. You've got to go after many subsidies and then manage the compliance and reporting on the, on the backend of that. And it takes, it takes a really concerted effort and a very qualified and knowledgeable staff to track all those subsidies and the compliance.
Thank you. I, I kind of wanted to highlight that just because I think folks don't always understand how complex those capital stacks can get when you're doing affordable housing and the importance for the city to constantly be advocating at the federal level for those investments, because if we aren't going to sort of, you know, swing for the fences as a city to, to make those happen, we really need all those other dollars to be able to make these projects happen, because without them, we're, we come up short. So appreciate you kind of detailing all the complexities there.
I appreciate that. It is very complex, and it takes a lot of experience to actually go after those funds and fill out all the applications, no matter if it's the, if it's private, city, state, federal, whatever the source is. They're all complex applications.
Quick, quick question. In reference to Creston Park.
Yes, sir.
Will all of that be demoed at the same time for Creston Park? And then I've got a follow-up, because originally, I know that the idea was not to demo all of the project, but I know it's been vacant now for a number of years. So question in the Oak Grove project, are you going to displace those people out of the Oak Grove apartments? Or can you find place, placement for them in the, in the area, in the, in the apartments?
So on Oak Grove, we hope to use the buildings within the campus as it is right now. With all the buildings that are there, we hope that we can have a vacant building or two and help people, help families move around within the site and re, keep them housed within the site, and then they move into their new building. Or we could renovate a building first, one of the completely dual renovation, and then move families within that as we, as we demo or, or rebuild, renovate the buildings and move them around. However, if we don't have a perfect fit for the family size, we may have to help them relocate off-site temporarily and then come back. But the important thing to know is that under the Uniform Relocation Act, nobody can be displaced or lose their housing or become homeless because of this project. They have rights, and so they'll have a choice in what they can do. So they'll have a say. But the most convenient thing, the easiest thing, would be if you can help them move within the site as the project continues to move forward. Oh, and on the Creston Park project, there's actually two phases. In the first phase, overall, we're placing 159 units of existing public housing that will all be demoed. In the first phase, we're putting in 170 units, starting at 29th Street, and then it will progress down the hill towards the vacant land that is there, if you're familiar with the street there. And so that'll be phase one, but there'll, there'll be, I think, 96 units will be demoed in that phase, and then 74 in the second phase, which we do not have HUD approval to demo the, the, all of those units in the second phase. But only seven of those homes are currently occupied on 26th and 27th Streets. So everybody else has been relocated, and the homes are vacant and HUD-approved for demolition. We just have to apply for the demolition on those remaining homes, and we should get that without a problem. But those families have the same rights as the Oak Grove families, and they will be relocated at our expense into housing that they choose with the same subsidy, and they will not experience any increase in rent, and they will be able to come back to the units that are rebuilt on that project site.
Thanks for the presentation and for your clearly important work. Just a few follow-up questions. I was delivering some donations to animal welfare, taking not the interstate, but the arterials. And so as I was coming back, I found myself on Reno and by where Vita Nova is going to be. And I thought of this project, and a concern I have, and I'm wondering what we're doing to address it, is sidewalk infrastructure on Reno. Because you have, of course, just to, for those of you who don't think about this area, and those of you who do, then this will be old hat, but you have the Okana Development just to the north of Reno. And then you have Bricktown just to the east, I'm sorry, to the west of this development. But there, there is just no pedestrian infrastructure whatsoever connecting the people who are going to call this location home. There's no connection to the cool, you know, recreational facilities. There's no connection to the cool, you know, recreational facilities and educational facilities there at O'Connor. There's nothing connecting them to the MAPS trail along the river. There's nothing connecting them to Bricktown, to say nothing of connecting them to the nearby school. Douglas is right around the corner. Am I wrong?
Across the bridge.
Across the bridge? Yeah. I mean, and then Crooked Oaks just right down the other way. So, do we have plans for pedestrian infrastructure? And I'll tell you the stakes. The stakes are if we don't, then we're about to house people on an island, like a concrete island. And that's going to make it difficult for them to access public transportation. I'm guessing if someone was unhoused recently, access to a vehicle will be very difficult. And so, public transportation will be critical. So, do we have plans? If not, what can we do to remedy this issue?
So, we do not have plans right now that I'm aware of on this site. I think this is a new proposal. When we worked through the bond issue previously, obviously, it wasn't a site, you know, it wasn't a site that was proposed for something like this. Certainly something that we can incorporate in our discussions on sidewalk projects in the 2025 bond. So, it's something that we can incorporate in our discussions looking at this.
Please keep me posted as we work into creating that bond package. I know this is not my ward and I'm looking over across the horseshoe right now. But, you know, it's our city, so for those of us who move about it. So, that's a critical thing. May I ask another question? Two more follow-ups. And thank you, City Manager, for that response. When we're looking at Creston, in my understanding, it's mixed income and mixed use.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So, there are retail possibilities mixed in with the housing. Is that right?
There are retail opportunities. In Phase 2, there's a community hub. And then in Phase 3, there's an assisted affordable living facility like we have at John H. Johnson up by Northwest 122nd Street and Western. Those are in the subsequent phases. But there could be mixed use if we can get the secure site control over some of the frontage on MLK other than what we have right now. We could even put some retail in, which would be fairly close to across the street from the new Clara Looper Center, which is just very close to that same, they're not directly across the street, but very close on MLK. So, we hope that we can have some retail in there as well. But there are, it is mixed income. There will be some market rate units in there. And then there will be set-asides for families below 80%, below 60%, below 50%, and then below 30% of AMI. And some of that is in concert with compliance with what subsidy that we're using, but also the fact that we're going to mix low to moderate income working households with people that have been experiencing homelessness or people that have disabilities. We have set-asides for different family compositions. It's a mix.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So, I've asked people with deeper knowledge when it comes to the economy, economics. For instance, spoke with Kathy O'Connor recently and I asked her about the northeast, that corridor specifically. And I was like, what's going on? Because we've talked about restaurants that have, you know, gone out of business. Now, of course, we know it's capitalism, right? So, the marketplace, you enter, it's competition. But I still asked the question. I was like, why might these businesses not be succeeding right now? What's going on? And yes, competition, right? You know, you're in the marketplace, so my pizza versus your pizza. But the second big answer, even ahead of that one, was housing, that we need more housing in that area. We need more people living there to be able to go shop at these places. We don't have that. And that answer made a lot of sense to me, makes a whole lot of sense to me. And so, I have a couple of follow-ups. Number 1, the mixed-use aspect of this and the mixed income, I love. I think this is great. How intentional are we being? So, rather than me making statements, I'll ask a question. How intentional are we being at this phase as it relates to the commercial spaces in terms of trying to create a pathway where the residents who are living, whether in the market rate units or in the subsidized units, what pathways are we creating? So, this is a MAPS board project, for instance. What pathways are we creating to connect these residents? Or are we going to create, have we thought about this, creating a pathway from, to rather, the Henrietta B. Foster Center, the Small Business Incubation? So, in other words, I guess what I'm saying is like, I'd like to see the resident who live in this area, specifically in this development, have access to small business loans, small business grants, the ability to own their own business in this development where they're going to live. So, in other words, more pizza shop, more bookstores, whatever it is that the market wants. But what are we going to do to better connect people who have historically, for reasons I have spoken about at length, for reasons that the public has spoken about at length, have not had access to capital, do not have access to a checking account, do not have access to a savings, do not have $500 in the event of a medical emergency? Are we being intentional about connecting these folks to capital, to the Henrietta B. Foster Small Business Incubation, specifically designed for minority populations?
Sure. So, I don't know that we can address all of those concerns with one project. However, let me say that this is a part of the city that has suffered from disinvestment for decades. The blight along there, the vacant lots where there used to be businesses that you're referencing, those are no longer there. Part of that is related to the fact that our project has been vacant and sitting there for a number of years. But even outside of that, if you drive up MLK, there are a number of vacant lots where businesses could be started. We're coming back with increased density here. We're coming from 159 duplexes or single-family homes over a four-block area. With increased density, we hope that that is an economic driver to have the incentive for other commercial businesses, creating other job opportunities to build up and down MLK. We also hope that this project by itself will create jobs. Under what's called Section 3, which is a regulation that our contractor will have to comply with, they have to market and advertise and try to attract local residents and businesses to apply to be subcontractors on this project. And that will happen across all three phases. So, when we hire, yes, the firm, McGuff, is out of Dallas, but the presentations that they made for us, they have a very intense Section 3 outreach and education program where they will employ to attract, advertise. They'll put flyers up all over the place. They'll have recruiting sessions where they try to attract local workers to work on the site during the project. I've had a number of local subcontractors call me already, roofers, pavers, all these local Oklahoma City businesses have been calling me, trying to get in line with McGuff Construction to sign up to get hired onto this job. It's not just one contractor that's going to do the work. They're going to hire many local contractors to carry out the job as well as the Section 3 project. Now, that won't create businesses that are contiguous with this project. But we will also have services onsite and we'll have tenant education classes. We'll have job skills. Goodwill as a partner will help people get to other locations that they can get job training at. So, we're connected with a lot of local nonprofits. Vida Nova is a perfect example of that. We have about four or five different local nonprofits that will be coming to the Vida Nova site to do, every single week, they'll be coming to the site to hold educational classes in the commercial space that we're adding to the motel right now. So, it'll be residential plus commercial space. So, every project that we have going forward, we intend to have Section 3 policy. We'll create local jobs and we'll provide tenant education and job counseling on the sites.
I think that's good. I would request for the city, like for us, like a, I'd like an inventory of who is going to be onsite. Who's going to be there? What jobs are they connecting them to? Which skills? I guess I'm asking for something a little bit bigger. I am asking for a very intentional, and I'm sorry, I'm going to be as joyful as I can in this request, but I also have to say, my patience is almost gone when it comes to the need to connect this city's youth and their families to skills where they can start their own businesses near where they live so they can take care of themselves. And in that answer, I did not hear that vision. And that's no shade to you because you have done some incredible work. I think it's lacking up here. I don't think we have that vision. I have articulated that vision a million times. John Marshall, going back to that, I had to step away related to that, but the Cameron Parks project you all heard about earlier, I am not the councilperson for that area, but some kids invited me. Just to remind you all the stakes, some kids invited me to come speak up there about public transportation. It was 8:30 in the morning. I teach at 10:00. And when I went, the class was 30, 40 kids, one teacher. Class overflowing, yes, the room, there's not enough space for anybody. And while three-fourths of the kids were invested in what I was saying to them, because their question was, what can they do to bring a closer bus shelter there? The closest one is on Memorial. They are on 122nd, which means they would have to walk through a neighborhood that has no sidewalks right now to get to that bus. While I'm walking them through how they could use the next bond election, you just heard the city manager describe, a fight broke out in the classroom. While a sitting city councilperson is there, you ever want to feel powerless? Do you ever want to feel powerless? Be on the list of one of the most powerful young professionals in this city and then watch your powers slip away from you right there in that classroom. Watch that happen and you will understand why my patience is gone. That was last month. This kid flung up out of his chair and lifted up his shirt to show how much of a man he was to the young woman who had called him out for not listening to what I had to say about how to better connect their class. That's what happened. That's what happened. That's the story. And we're building soccer courts around them, around them. I'm sorry. Around them. Will those kids be playing on those fields? So, I ask again, what are we doing to be very intentional about investing in the kids at John Marshall, the kids at Moon, the kids at Crooked, the kids at each of these schools to connect them to Metro Tech, Community College, Francis Tuttle, to the small business loans and grants that would allow them to be barbers, Nell technicians and business owners in this housing we are building? That is the question I am asking. And I keep asking it up here and there is never an answer. Do you know, I'm sorry, I'm going to go off on this. Do you know that just this week, as I was doing final exam grades, I got an email from this city government asking me, could I come to a very important meeting about the architecture designs for the new arena? I have asked for an entire year for a meeting about MAPS Board's youth centers and delay, 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 delay. I have not had one meeting on this topic. Not one. Not one. Not one. And I have asked for MAPS and I have asked for them to take me to the schools in Ward 2, to connect these kids, to help them define what goes into those youth centers. Not one meeting. Not one. What's the plan? What is the plan to connect these kids? This is not a speech. This is a literal question. What is the plan to connect them? I don't hear it right now. And I don't think it's your fault. I think it's up here.
Well, we're open to partnering with the city to make those connections. Again, we have set-asides for families below 30%, below 50%. We have 81 subsidized units out of the 170. So, people that really need affordable housing will be there and we'll be open to partnering for any job opportunity, trainings, partnerships with any of the partners that you're mentioning. So, be very open to that.
Councilman Cooper, I hear you saying that you want, because I do appreciate, I echo his appreciation of the conversation about the building of the, all the construction and the jobs created through that. I'm hearing you say what kind of multi-use sort of things will be happening on the property. And I don't know, do you all have plans of like the types of commercial tenants you're already pursuing? Is that, again, kind of open to collaboration? Because I think at one point, and this is many years ago, so it might have been a different project, but there was talk of like a pharmacy maybe onsite. So, I'm curious to hear if you have envisioned already or input from residents about the types of commercial services they'd like to see onsite. And then we can also, we can kind of take the inspiration there to think about how to plug residents of the area into those opportunities as well.
Sure. We don't have those plans right now for specific commercial businesses integrated in this with, other than the hub that we plan in another phase, which will have co-located services, not just us, but will have co-located nonprofit services in there with partners that we have, but not other commercial businesses, right, at this time. I don't have plans for a pharmacy at this time, but it could be, it would make sense connected to the senior housing that we're going to have on the site also with assisted living there. That makes sense. But I do not have details for those plans right now. But it does make sense to think ahead right now to create these partnerships that Councilor Cooper is talking about and to weave those into the plan as we move forward. Not only with this project, but with the other MAPS for housing, MAPS for homelessness projects also. People there are in needs of services. The families that live there would benefit from that and the jobs that it would create all make sense. I just have to say, it might be a little bit outside of my assignment to build housing. I just want to put that out there. I love the idea. But I do think that we need help from the city with these connections. Right now, I mean, be honest with you, with the price escalation that's been going on, trying to navigate our way and maintain the budget for Creston Park and these other projects is a huge challenge right now. And like I said, we badly need to invest in these areas of the city that have suffered from disinvestment. Not just for these projects here, but you'll see in our next round of projects that we're doing with the second allocation that we hope to receive here in a few minutes, we'll be working in neighborhoods that also need more investment and have not seen it in a long time to create good, brand-new housing for low-income families that don't have those choices right now.
So, I will answer some of the, I mean, give a response to some of the questions that you raised, Councilman. I think what you raise is very complicated and is involving many different entities. Obviously, working with the Oklahoma City Public Schools with their vision, with helping kids get training and connection, whether it's to college or to community college or it's to Vo-Tech, continuing to work in that space, discussions that we've had regarding the next bond issue and the GOAL funds and potential for how that can be. You know, the projects and programs that can be identified for that, and there's a significant amount of work there. So, I think it's very, very broad what you've defined, but I think it's something that's definitely a lofty goal, but it's achievable. It does take a lot of work from a lot of different parties. You've had meetings, I have as well, with the Chamber of Commerce and their vision for what we need for job training and for assistance for people to get connected to jobs. And so, those are all things we'll continue to work on. But it's not going to be just the city's response. It's not going to be just the schools or a housing authority or a chamber. It's going to be all of us working together as a community on this. And so, there's a long stretch to get that done. There's a lot of decisions that have to be made in a lot of different areas. And so, that's something we're committed to and being supportive of. And then as we prioritize how we fund different projects and programs, we've got to look at the resources that are available. we've got to look at the resources that are available. And granted, it's just, it's so important to do so many different things, but it's got to be within the resources we can pull together and the partnerships that we can create. So I think what you've identified is something that's very complicated, but it's gonna take a community to resolve that and address that. And I think it's something that we've got to continue to engage in.
That is a very thoughtful response and I appreciate it. I do. I do. I get very passionate about this because it just hurts to feel like I can't do anything when I know we can. I do appreciate the applause, which I guess is coming from a place of, this has been going on too long. So no, your response is very useful, City Manager. I guess my response in return is I would like, for no other meetings, at least for me, no scheduled meetings about any issue other than this one at the start of 2025, to begin that complicated work, to build those partnerships. Because every word you said is exactly correct and you know it's correct. I want you to put me to work doing this coalition building. I do not want to be in a reactive place anymore where I'm constantly reacting to emails, plugging dams. I want us to prioritize this and I want you to utilize me to do that coalition building. And it will be complicated and it will take time. But right now, I just feel like a leaf at the mercy of the wind and it doesn't feel good. So that's my ask of you. And any other councilperson who wants to join me in that, bring it on. Any resident who wants to join in that, bring it on. But too long. So I hear you and I hope you're hearing me. I don't want a single other meeting unless it relates to the Community Benefits Agreement, which is about community, and this issue of how do we address the housing and educational needs and connecting our people to these skills and education so they can take care of themselves and not have the government do that for them? So thank you, City Manager, for that response. Thank you, that was very kind of the audience. Thank you for that.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Thank you for your time.
So Mark Gillett, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, will present, just give an update on the plans for the second allocation of funds for the homelessness funds for MAPS Four.
So the last two pages of your resolution about item B A is the allocation request for number two. The Oklahoma City Housing Authority is scheduled to receive five allocations. We rise before you now to talk about allocation number two that will be an additional $10.7 million dedicated to affordable housing in Oklahoma City. Supportive Housing Project number three is a collaboration between the Continuum of Care or the Key to Home Builds Program here in Oklahoma City. We have made an application to the COC, Continuum of Care Builds Program at HUD that we hope will be funded. It will target $2.5 million of MAPS money towards that and estimated leverage on that is $7.5 million, 40 units of supportive housing, new construction. Supportive Housing Project number four is a program with a third-party developer here in Oklahoma City. We knew all along when we applied for MAPS the first time, we would not be able to do all these programs on our own. And so we are going to be working with a new partner. We host alliance to build the fourth supportive housing program. That program has $1 million of MAPS money with a $10 million leverage for 39 units of affordable housing. The next program is Will Rogers Courts, the Choice Neighborhood Program that the City of Oklahoma City and the Housing Authority are in partnership with. Right now, I really appreciate Councilwoman Hammond's dedication to this project, to working with Will Rogers Courts, Stockyards, the neighborhood in between to redevelop and revision that entire neighborhood here in Oklahoma City to address some of those needs that the councilman was speaking about earlier with training, job opportunities as such. And so Will Rogers Courts would take $2.5 million from MAPS and then be leveraged with over $50 million. We're working through the choice application right now, ready to present our transformation initiative in February. And then we will await the next announcement from HUD to apply for those funds. And then other programs can utilize MAPS funding. And so we hope that you will agree that it is time now to move on and to begin our second phase of affordable housing development here in Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, thank you. And we have a resident who signed up to speak on these items, Michael Washington.
Well, thank you, my illustrious friends and unfriended. What in the hell is this man, who in the hell does he think he's talking to? Y'all know Michael wasn't gonna be nice when he stepped up here, didn't you? 100 Park Place, by the way. Now then, shake your head, my friend, because I'm gonna do my thing today. My turn now. Who in the hell you think you're coming with this poppycock from, man? You already just stated that you're gonna build 159 duplexes, 159 duplex in the northeast side of Oklahoma City? What's the purpose of doing that? To displace those people already living in the comfortable homes that they own? Because after a while, your intention is to move them so you can put other projects in that area to do the thing that you want to do. It's called gentrification, by the way. Now then, that's what it's called. That's right. Tip, tax, and finance money that you gonna be using to do that with? We know it's designed to what? Create more suitable blighted areas and make them affordable to where it's more opulent or more respectful? But you don't move people out of their homes and their schools for the purpose of making that happen? Just like what y'all did with northeast Oklahoma City School and made it northwest class and not. You tell me that the idea is not upon a racist mode? Michael sees it all. I'm not gonna buy down and accept it because I know what the hell is going on here today. Now then, you had me going there for a minute, sir. We all know that there are more than almost 2,000 homeless people. We all know that they need affordable housing to live in to get them off the street, to increase the value of the properties that are less valuable because of them being everywhere. Well, sir, let me tell you something. This MAPS project, MAP Four project, the city council, the city housing authority, it's all designed to move black folks out so you can move back in your place when it used to be yours in the 60s. I'm gonna keep it real while I'm up here. That's right now, we ain't gonna play with you. You got one person gonna do it tears like a twos, but like it tears today. Boy, it's just so happen, I just don't have the time like I need more because I love fighting. You understand me? And I don't respect anyone else. If anybody got a problem with what these people doing, call me up free of charge. I will file a lawsuit on your ass free of charge. I'm gonna serve my curly and I don't give a damn who like or not. That's right. Y'all not gonna continue to destroy and just trample on the black community anymore. Matter of fact, we only fit-ins now.
30 seconds remaining.
We only fit-ins now. They don't, we don't have no black community no more. It's all belong to y'all. You got Hispanic community, Chinese community, everybody else, but we ain't got nothing no more. We're just fit-ins now. Take that old MAPS fake stuff to somebody else. Now then, 16 seconds, she'll come fast when I'm having fun. Now then. So I'll say to you that we're not going with this foolishness. So only second sevens, second sevens left. Let me tell you, to hell with your soccer team, boxing team, whatever you want. It's time to quit playing games. Let's get back with education. I started to be stuff, baby, because I will return. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentations and citizens to be heard on the consent docket. We can now adopt it, except for the one item previously approved and the item previously deferred. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, item 10, the concurrence docket. We have items A through F. We can take with one motion. There we go. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11, items for individual consideration. We have item 11A. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 5500 South Hayawassee Road from AA to RA2. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
They have not. Is Mr. Jones present? If you could just come up real quickly. We've got quite a few protests signed up on this. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna make a motion to defer this item to January 14th. It's the time to reach out to the protesters that we had and see if we can work through some issues with them, possibly. If you don't mind. Is that all right? Great. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we defer this to January 14th.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on the deferral to January 14th. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'll be reaching out.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, item B was struck, which brings us to item C, which is an ordinance on finally hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 5900 Wildwood from PUD 1842 to PUD 2016. This was deferred from November 19th. And Councilman Lee Cooper, we do have a few people who have signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a situation, obviously, that I'm new to the shoot today, but have tried to follow up with this with several meetings. And I want to thank the residents for inviting me out on Friday evening also to share with this. I've had several conversations with Mark. And so, Mark, if you would just share with us what you have.
Sure thing. Mark Zitzau with Johnson and Associates. Address is Wendy Sheridan Avenue. I'm gonna walk you a little bit through the site and how we got here. But if you're unfamiliar with this property, it's just off of I-235 and I-44. This was the old Barrow pit when they built the Belle Isle Station, Walmart and retail. And so what's not really shown on this aerial are some kind of deep pits where dirt was removed to fill in Belle Isle Lake to ultimately build that project. And so I think because of that, the site has significant challenges in development. So this is far from the first zoning application that's been before this body requesting a change. In 2021, we did a project here called The Corridor. It was a PUD that had a various mix of densities. I'm gonna walk through that real quick because that's kind of the, what led to this application because it's similar but different. So PUD 1842 was approved, I believe, in 2021 with two tracks, single-family and multifamily. The single-family tracks were only the pieces that abut the existing Wildwood neighborhood. And when you look at the existing Wildwood neighborhood, what you'll notice are multiple stub streets that tie into this property. What that would indicate is that this property was always intended to be a part of that neighborhood. When you stub in streets, the planning commission in the city, expect developers to tie into them. Under 1842, we did not allow any connection except for these seven single-family homes. We took no access for the rest of the project. We went south to the service road because of the density, which under this PUD allows 522 apartments. What I passed out, just because there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of details, is a comparison sheet between 1842 and our PUD. And what you'll notice is in almost every single category, we increased the restrictions, we increased buffers in exchange for what we are asking for, which is a slight increase in density of 62 total units over the entire property. Of those 62, 39 were single-family and 23 were multifamily. So we've made significant changes to the project since we submitted this back in May. A typical zoning application takes three to four months to work through the process. We're approaching eight and that's because of the number of meetings we've had. We've had four neighborhood meetings with our group, the developer and the neighborhood, which we had multiple meetings with kind of two different portions of the neighborhood. And then I know there were countless other meetings with the planning commissioner, the city councilwoman, and now Councilman Cooper. And so there have been a significant amount of engagement and back and forth on this project. So I'm just gonna quickly walk through some of these changes. One of the biggest concerns that we heard at the first planning commission meeting was it felt like this project was turning its back on the neighborhood. And so this was a difficult problem to solve in that we have a portion of the neighborhood saying, we don't want anyone to tie in because we don't want the increased traffic. But then at the same time, we don't want you to turn your back on the neighborhood. So the single-family portion, which is track one, we redesigned so that all of the lots that abut 59th and Wildwood Drive front the neighborhood streets. So it would look like the rest of Wildwood Drive as you're pulling into the neighborhood. So only Lot 1 in the new PUD allows access into the Wildwood neighborhood. In exchange for that, the developer has agreed to pay for traffic calming per the city's ASAP program in the neighborhood in two locations. The other thing, or the other item that came up of concern was that this would have its own HOA. We are legally required to have an HOA because we have a detention pond in our far northeast corner of track one. It is a HOA only for the maintenance of that pond. We have committed to working with the neighborhood, if they're agreeable, and the city and the neighborhood alliance to officially change the neighborhood boundaries to incorporate track one so that anyone who is willing to pay dues in track one can pay that into the neighborhood association of Wildwood. So we've made attempts to make track one feel a part of it, but we understand that the multifamily, which is track two, there's no desire to have that number of trips going through the neighborhood. So all of that traffic is being pushed south to the service road. The original PUD, which I think some people prefer the site plan of the original PUD to this one. Unfortunately, whether this is approved or this is denied, that site plan is not what will be built. It will be a modified version of what you see. So we believe that the increased buffers of 60 feet, the increased landscaping and the kind of dispersment of units across the property is a much better site plan and fit. I'm happy to answer any questions. But ultimately, we've gotten here with staff recommending approval, planning commission unanimously recommending approval, and countless neighborhood meetings. So with that, we would ask for your approval. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Mark, couple of questions. One is when I met with the residents, of course, was green space and the actual green space for this particular project open opposed to what it looked like for the first project? Can you speak a little bit to that?
Sure. So the green space, I think, is similar and it's just, the project is spread out vastly different. So when you look at the original, we had kind of pockets in certain areas. And what you'll see is a lot of it is pushed south and pushed to the far east. And then the rest of this, while it looks green, it was all lots. And this PUD did not commit to that amount of open space. When we got more into the engineering of the project, I mentioned the Barrow pit. This property falls about 80 feet from 59th Street down to the service road. So portions of it are not buildable per the group that had put this together. And that's partially why you saw these kind of very winding roads, was trying to navigate up that hill. So we're respecting those areas and in doing so, when we get to the specific plan stage where we'll have to go back to planning commission before anything is constructed, we'll note the tree preservation and all of the open space calculations.
I have since, Mark, come to know that just recently, we've done some of I have since, Mark, come to know that just recently, we've done some upgrades in terms of our commitment as a city, because we've had so many drainage problems all over the city, that there's now new drainage standards that will be applied to this particular project. So, in it, the parking spaces go along with whatever the housing is for this development. But drainage and retention will obviously have to meet those standards. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We will do a full drainage report and study that gets submitted to the city. All of that happens before any construction can start. Right now, so you could see the two large blue ponds in the center, those are, that's one of the Borrow Pits that kind of exists in the ground today. But then, there are three additional ponds that we're constructing, one in the far southwest corner and one in the far northeast corner. And after discussions with the neighborhood, the one in the farther southwest corner, that one will actually, it actually sits higher than the homes. So, we'll be draining it back into ODOT's storm source system. But you're correct, the city's adopted a new drainage ordinance, and we'll have to adhere to all of those requirements. And then, for parking, we're meeting the city's parking code. We're not seeking a reduction or a deviation from it. And so, that's two spaces per two-bed or three-bed, and then, one and a half spaces for any studio or one-bedroom apartment.
Are there any other questions for Mark? I believe we have others who have signed up to speak, I believe.
Thank you. Yes, all right. I'll call them up one at a time. And I would encourage everyone to state your name and address, and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. We'll start with Chris Henson. Maybe go there. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Chris Henson. I live at 334 Northeast 59th. My street actually butts up right against the new development. Our biggest concerns for my wife and I, I mean, we love the space. That's why we moved there. That is going away. There's no choice in that. So, the biggest things that would affect us are, I believe, in the initial PUD, the height restrictions for the developed, or for the apartment building is like five stories. It would look directly out over all of our houses. That was a big point of contention. We didn't want that. The new PUD has a height restriction, I believe, of three stories. And it has the, it's like a 50-foot buffer zone, I believe, of green space between the new development and the housing. So, that was the big thing for us. I believe that the single-family homes would probably help the look of the neighborhood as far as like being integrated. I would rather see single-family homes than apartment buildings. I know that that's not everyone's preference. And as long as the new neighborhood was integrated into ours, like the Neighborhood Association, I think we'd be very much in favor of that. And other than that, that's just how it would affect us personally. I can't speak to the rest of the neighborhood, but we'd probably be in favor of 2016, assuming that the business, I believe in the first PUD, there was allotment for businesses. That would be going away. My understanding is that is going away. Probably be turned into residential spaces, so then, the units would go up again, and it'd probably be comparable to the 2016. I could be wrong on that. If there's a big discrepancy, then I may not be in favor of the 2016. But as of right now, we would be. So, there you go. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Vicki Hooks. My address is 323 Northeast 59th Street in the Wildwood Hills. I am the legal 300 feet from the development. And I just wanted to have the opportunity for you to hear me. And this plan introduced as a concept, but it is the plan of concluded development. So, when I got the notice on June 3rd that this was going on, I didn't even know what a PUD was. I did some investigating and asked other neighbors, had they received anything? Nobody said they had received anything. And then, one neighbor says she did, but it looked like junk mail, and she threw it away. And when I actually called Johnson &amp; Associates and I spoke to Jessica, and she, the meeting was going to be June 23rd, I believe, and so, we, I asked her, "Is there any way that we could, you know, cancel that?" And she did. And so, as you notice, you know, we had some meetings, like he said, but because of weather, we had weather, bad storm, and we were without electricity for like three, for three days. So, it took us about three weeks to actually even meet with them. So, we don't have a neighborhood association structured, and so, it was no efforts made to contact us or me or any other neighbors. If you did attend any of the meetings, you had to be on an email to even get the, to know where the meetings was. And so, when we did attend meetings, they acted like we were troublemakers, and we didn't, they didn't welcome any of our input, welcome or want any of our input. We're not against the development. We just are concerned about congestion in our neighborhood. This proposal, it is for multifamily development, and it's going to more than double the current residents in a neighbor of, number of homes in our Wildwood Heights and Hills area.
30 seconds remaining. 30 seconds remaining on your time.
Okay. And so, we really just would like to just know that it's going to be very congested with all the proposed PUD. So, all right, thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
When I hear you talk about congestion, and maybe, Councilman, you all have already addressed this, but I pulled up a map just to familiarize, refamiliarize myself with this area. Is there a certain street you all are concerned about, like people speeding on or through? Or is there anything that you feel like the developer and the council could do to help you all address, maybe just traffic calming or?
Yeah. In the first, the one that's going, the 1842, it doesn't let anything come through the neighborhood as far as just the eight houses that are proposed for that. Now, he's asking for 47 on, in the neighborhood of Track 1, and then, he's also adding three on our street on the, on the south side. So, it's going to be 51 homes. And the congestion for that, if you add cars, it's going to be at least two cars per, you know, home. That's going to be like 100 to 200 people, you know, driving in our neighborhood.
Which, which street are you?
I'm on 59th Street. I'm on the back street. So, it'll be on the west side of me.
So, are we, I'm sorry, are we concerned then? So, I hear, when you say congestion, are you concerned about people maybe going around Wildwood Drive quickly to get to 63rd? Or is that?
Yeah. Well, we're concerned about the congestion of cars and people. They're introducing like all these, you know, cars. It's going to be another 100 cars on top of what we already have. Then, on top of that, we're going to be having new people, and it's, you know, every house is probably going to at least have two to four people in there. So, we're introducing more people too, and vehicles. And we're not even talking about the apartments. The apartments, he wants to put 545 apartments in Track 2.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Brenda Carruthers. My address is 5716 Branagh Drive. The developer tells us that approval of PUD 2016 is a slight increase in apartments. The developer tells us that approval of PUD 2016 increases the number of apartments from 522 to 545. This is not accurate. Approval of this PUD increases the number of apartments from 350 to 545, an increase of 195 apartments. Why do I say this? I have a 15-second clip from the 26 August 2021 Planning Commission meeting to approve the existing PUD 1842. When the chairperson asked the developer, Tim Johnson of the same company, how many apartments were allowed, the response was 350. Please listen to that short exchange. We'll get it here. I still have another three minutes. I had it on mute, so I have to get it off mute before it'll do. I'm so sorry. But it's important for you to hear this man say this, because for me saying it doesn't mean anything. Okay. Oh, I can't get my phone to work. Here it is. Here, mute. Okay.
How many apartment units could be there?
350, but we kept the density on the site at 12 units per acre, which matches what is assumed today.
Got it.
I'm going to play it one more time, just because it's so short, and I'm not a technical whiz, but we'll try it. Okay, here we go. Don't fire me yet.
What's the, what was the point you wanted to get across? I'm not sure if-
How many apartment units are going to be there? Let me ask it differently. How many apartment units could be there?
350, but we kept the density on the site at 12 units per acre.
12 units.
Which matches what is assumed today.
Got it.
Okay, you were asking me, what is the point of the video?
Yeah, what did you want us to know from that recording? And we're out of time now, so I don't know, just one last conclusion.
Am I out of time? Okay. The point is, he keeps telling us the number's 522. That's not an accurate number. And I've tried to go back to this 350. The only way he gets 522 is he uses the total acreage of 45 acres. Where are you going to put the 39 houses if you're using all the space to figure your apartments? So, he's going to put the apartments on 30 acres. That makes the density 19 instead of 12. That's my point.
Thank you. Is Ricky here? Ricky Kelly?
I'll read that first. She's here.
Okay. Good morning.
It is a wonderful pleasure and experience for me to stand here before you guys. I used to do it when I was a elementary principal in Oklahoma City Public Schools to the Board of Education. And it's a trying situation that I'm in now. I'm compassionate about change. Change is good. But get everybody on board. Talk to us as individuals and not just show me a picture. Express your concern, so I can express my concern. I live at 330 Northeast 59th Street. My property, my backyard, will be greatly affected by this change. When they started building the highway, we had all kind of varmints coming out, and no one would come out and get the cages set up. They said, "We don't do that anymore." We have an abundance of coyotes that will be coming into our neighborhood again, affecting our style. And they're not scared of humans. They walk right down the middle of the street. They jump fences, and that's safety, and that is a great concern of mine. And to change the PUD from 1842, which that person was very compassionate, met with the neighbors, got a good plan, a good feeling of how we felt about our neighborhood and how to preserve our neighborhood, and still go about change. Now, we have Johnson &amp; Johnson coming in, and they take no recognition of what the past has been, what the present can be, and what the future can be, working together with our neighborhood. And I'm so glad that you brought up education, because that is one of the things that I would mention in the meeting. Where are these students going? Because you know you're going to have them. And our educational system is set up on prediction of estimates, and this would be good for our kids. And our schools are failing at as it is. And now, you're coming in, Millwoods on one side of us, and Oklahoma City Public Schools on the other side. We can't get teachers now to fill up our classrooms to educate, but that doesn't seem to be any concern of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Are you, Mark?
30 seconds remaining.
I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity. Reverend Lee Cooper Jr., I welcome you to the council. Mayor David Hope, it's a pleasure to speak to you. And I just hope that you guys will consider that we are very compassionate and concerned about our neighborhood. And I just want to mention this, one little thing, and then, I'll sit down. As I was growing up, integration was a very, very, very hard thing for me to understand. Segregation was very, very hard for me to accept and understand. And when I would go down, Kelly, and see those homes over there on Wildwood Hills and Heights, and I'd ask my dad, "Why can't we live there?" And at that time, I couldn't, because I was what? I was brown. But now, I'm 73 years old. I live there. I have purchased a home. I own it. I've been there for 40 years, and I'm very, very compassionate about keeping our neighborhood in a safe, conducive environment. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Annetta Dean Burden?
Huh?
Oh, the next speaker, sorry.
As Mayor Hope always mispronounces my name, I'm Annetta Ben Burden.
A very beautiful handwriting, but it is hard for me to read.
I'm also a resident of Wildwood Hills Heights. I do stay on the Heights side. I'm here this morning because I'm very concerned about this whole process. The gentleman stood, and he talked about the number of meetings and things like that that was held. The meeting, those were not meetings. Those were information sessions. The first meeting, as I understand, they reached out to me. First of all, the whole neighborhood was not even aware of this proposed development. I do, I was told Nikki did reach out to me, Councilman Nice, I'm sorry, did reach out to me, to let me know that there was an effort made to contact the neighborhood. But most councilmen, I hope, would know, in their particular wards, where they have established neighborhood associations. We do not. So, therefore, neighbors did not, was not even aware of this development. By the time we sat down with them for the first time, we were being told what was going to come forward. They have not been honest and front, and you have not been, about what was told to the residents in terms of numbers, as my neighbor just shared with you. Meetings that, when we did come to meetings, the information that was given, was given in a way in which it was very confusing. a way in which it was very confusing and conflicting. The things that we did ask for, in one meeting, we were asked, "Well, what would you like to see changed?" Because it seemed like there was a tug-of-war. And it's not that we do not want the development. What we want to do is be active participants in the planning of this development. The gentleman stated that the roads led down there because there was an intent for further development. That is not true, hence the name Wildwood. The intent when Mr. Braniff developed that neighborhood was for there to be a wild space around it, and that was the attractiveness for the homes in that area. It was never meant to be developed from concrete to concrete. That was not the intent.
30 seconds remaining.
But again, we're not frowning upon the development. We want to be a part of that development. The delays that we asked for was because, as Councilman Cooper said, we were put in a reactionary situation versus being in a proactive situation. So we are asking, again, that he go back to the drawing board, that we have that opportunity to sit down with the developers and develop something that will work for us. Our quality of life is going to be impacted from then on. His development will be done, he will go on. However, we will have traffic that will more than triple. We will have people that are in apartments that have one-year leases, which means that they can turnover on the average nationally every 2.5 years. And those people will be coming into our residence as they should because they live in the apartments. That's not all right. That's not all right to more than double the amount of homes and then put us in a situation where you're having a constant turnover of the population. We hope that you all will reconsider this, look at the impact to our neighborhood, and vote that we come back together and work as a group with this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Washington?
Not throwing the coif off this time. I think I can get my point relatively clear here. Sir, to my immediate right, I think you know what your intent is. You don't even respect these people enough. You don't even live in a neighborhood and suddenly you wanna put a business up and say, "Okay, y'all, accept what I'm getting ready to do, me and the developers. I don't care what the hell you think. I know you've been here years, built your families, communities, spent large sums of money for your independent neighborhood. What the hell with all of that? It's all about economics with me. I don't care about you having peace and surrender of mind. I don't care that you know that projects being brought, included in your neighborhood is gonna bring down the community because there are gonna be a lot of vacancy, drunks. I'm not standing against anybody, because I don't know who all gonna live there, so we know we ain't talking about one specific person, don't we? But we do know the whole purpose of that was for them to have their own set of neighborhood for that kind of thing. You'll take this kind of thing to Nicholas Hills, you ain't gonna do that, are you? Come on, now, talk to me while I'm up here. Because those people ain't gonna allow that. And you know yourself, your job, basically, you're gonna fall out of favor with them if you ignore their request, don't we? Now then, let's move on. And sir, how are you gonna come in and disregard families who themselves have lived in a neighborhood of peace and basically is crime-free? Who are able to go out and pick their mail up in maybe a newspaper that's dropped on the concrete or grass? But now you're gonna talk about, we're gonna, I am opposed to it. They say they're not, and I don't represent these folks. I represent freedom, justice, and equality as all of you up here know. I don't care if you're white, black people, gray or green. If you ask Michael to speak, look out, John, here I come. That's right. I know my delivery isn't what always is desired, but see, if I wasn't independent, that would make me strong with it. If I was a robot, then everything would be out of place, wouldn't it? God didn't make me a robot, so I'm gonna speak the way I think I need to speak. Because I allow each one of you to do the same thing. That's what being an individual in humanity is about. You need to take time and listen to these people. Again, the lady just stated that it was, it was an informed meeting. It wasn't a meeting about, hey, let's sit down, we don't need this, here, that, and the other, oh, man, let's have some more meetings, let's take us a coffee, you know, let's drink, so we go to the store, whatever. It wasn't none of those things like that. It was just, hey, y'all, come together, get ready, y'all.
30 seconds.
Get ready, y'all, we're getting ready to put some apartments over here. Are y'all ready? Okay, come on down to the city planning meeting, they approved it. Doesn't work like that. And like the lady just, gallantly just mentioned, sometimes people are not informed in a manner they would because maybe they're out of the house at the time. Some people may don't always connect with their email addresses. That's why you need the people to canvass the neighborhoods and say, "We got his paper." That's what I, they got plenty of money, if you're gonna build all them buildings up, I gotta get ready. I see Mary looking up. Thank y'all very much. Reconsider this, don't pass today.
Thank you. Councilman Lee Cooper, that concludes the residents who signed up to speak.
Okay. Anyone else left to speak?
Not on this side.
If, if I thought another meeting would, would help this particular instance-
Oh, uh, I guess Varan Randall did not sign up. Would you be okay with him speaking?
Uh, yeah, Mark.
Sure, sure.
My name is Varan Randall. Varan Randall. Some of you folks here know who I am, some of you folks don't know who I am yet. You will probably. I, uh, my family moved into the, I wasn't gonna talk about this subject, I have another subject that's pretty close to this. My family moved into that neighborhood in 1964. We were the first African-Americans to move into that neighborhood. It was not without a great deal of gnashing of teeth and wailing. The guy who lived next door to us, Little Jim, owned the C-Store at the corner of 63rd and Kelly. He is rumored to have been the local head of the Ku Klux Klan clavering. He had begun buying the homes in that neighborhood in order to keep folks like me out of the Unfortunately for him and fortunately for us, my family had the ability and we were well-educated enough to know our rights. And my mom was the kind of person who was not going to allow anyone to keep her from her dream. That home in Wildwood was her dream. She came off of a little dirt poor farm in Oakmawgate County, and she could not wait to get off that farm. In fact, our relative Aunt, my Aunt Clara Looper, had decided that she was going to get off of that little farm out there and not marry the guy that she had been betrothed to because she didn't like him. But she was going to come to Oklahoma City, she was gonna find a way to get an education, and she was gonna have a life. And so she went to my mother and to my mother's cousins and said that to them. You people don't have to live out here, you don't have to marry those guys if you don't like them. You can come to Oklahoma City, we'll find a way to get you an education, we'll find a way to help you. And so my mother came here, got a job, got a job, went to school at Langston, got an education, and taught in the Oklahoma City Public School for 36 years. We moved into that little house. The man next door was Little Jim, the guy who was a Ku Klux Klan member. His, he was raising his granddaughter, who was in school at Bishop McGinnis High School. He would be so upset if he knew how great a friend of mine she became. Fortunately for me, my parents sent me to McGinnis. She became a great friend of ours. We moved into that neighborhood because of the expanse, because of the woods around there, because it was a nice neighborhood, because it was quiet, because there was not the drama that existed in other parts of town. We had a business on Northeast 4th Street. We were a part of that business entity down on Northeast 4th Street. It helped us to move our family up. That was what Wildwood was for people like us. It was a move out of a really dire situation into the mainstream. It is disingenuine of us right now to put apartments in a neighborhood that has historically been for single families. Our community needs more single-family dwellings, not more apartments. We've got more apartments, and we can see what the, the problem for us, for us is in apartment life. We are better people if we own our own homes. We are better people if we feel vested in the community where we live. We are better people if we know who each and one of our neighbors are, and we know that our neighbors are invested in the exact same things which we are invested in. We are better people-
Thanks, Varan. We're over time.
-when we think and do things in a certain kind of way. I just asked you guys to think about this, and if you can, I'm not, I don't know anything about this. I didn't know anything about it until this morning when I looked at the, at the agenda and saw that address, which is four or five blocks from, from our home. I would like for you guys to think again about it and think about the people whom you are impacting in that neighborhood, if you would, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, sorry.
So I was gonna address a couple of things. Councilman Cooper, I believe you maybe had stepped out. The developers agreed to put in traffic coming per the ASAP program on the streets that would most likely be impacted by the increased single-family homes that are tract one in this. And then in terms of the clip of the Planning Commission meeting years ago, we're aware of it, we, you don't have to believe us in terms of our density calculations, we confirmed it with staff. The way the PUD, the previous PUD was drafted, was 12 units an acre over the entirety of that tract two. There has continued to be discrepancy in the way that it is being calculated today in that they're using the acreage of our current 2016 apartment tract and comparing it to the original tract to calculate the acreage. The original PUD was 12 units an acre over the 45 acres, which is why the existing PUD allows 522 apartments. So at the end of the day, our request is essentially to add 62 additional units, and in exchange for that increased density, we've increased the landscaping buffers, we've increased the setbacks, we've lowered the height, we've increased the screening, we've required public notice for the specific plan. We, we feel we've done everything we can at this point. After eight months to get to this point, we would simply ask for your approval.
We, we've had a number of meetings, and I know that I asked if we wanted to have another meeting, and they said they did not want to have another meeting. So I think this is something that has to happen today to make a decision about what this looks like. I can't move it forward.
Let, let me ask a couple of questions, if that's okay. Number one, Mark, there's no businesses being developed. Can you put track one and track two up there, please? Thank you. No business is being contemplated in either track, correct?
There are no commercial uses allowed in this PUD.
All right. And can you tell me a little bit more about the green space in the area and how that's changed from PUD 1842 to the current PUD?
Yeah, so in terms of the language that's in the current PUD, we're requiring 60-foot preservation and setback areas along the north and west of tract two. The existing PUD only had, I think, 20-foot building setbacks. And so we've increased it there, and then there are various areas that will just be preserved based on the nature of the grades on the site. And so when we, if we get to the specific plan stage, we'll outline all of those preservation areas that we're proposing today.
Great. And then as far as the multifamily in tract two, that's being driven to the south to the service road?
Correct.
Do I understand that correctly?
The multifamily under the new PUD is limited to tract two, and all of that traffic will go south to the service road. We are not permitted under the PUD to take any access north. And that includes construction traffic, which we further limited hours of operation on in the PUD.
Yeah, and planning was unanimous in its decision on this, is that correct?
Correct.
And staff recommended approval?
Correct.
And you've had at least four meetings so far?
Correct.
In light of the people that spoke today, would you be offended or upset if I asked to defer this for two weeks so I could go out and take a look at it?
I would, Councilman, I would not be offended. I don't know that deferment is, is gonna be, but, but I'm, I'm willing to, to take a couple of weeks, and anyone who would like to go observe or look, then you're welcome to do, to do that. So I move for deferment and-
And I'll second that.
Yeah, for, for two weeks. What is it, January 9th? What is the next Jan?
New Year's Eve is the next one, December 31st.
May I ask a couple questions? One, I'd like to join Councilman. We get applause for going on drives. No, I'd like to join. I'm curious, one thing you're not gonna like that I'm gonna say, one thing I think you will like. Which one do you want to hear first? One question, part of me wanting to go is this green space conversation. I would like to know what, and maybe you can already kind of speak to right now as we head out there, but I'd like to know, would, would you put the track back up for us, please? And maybe not, yes, this one, thank you. When I look at the, and can you toggle, just if everyone can use their imagination, could you toggle back to what was on the back of the PUD where it just says, "Proposed tract one"? Okay. On track one, where those 44 lots are, if you look on the PUD application, it's just a lot of trees, like a lot, a lot of trees. And I guess my question is, can we, what can be done to mitigate the loss of those trees in track one? And then on the southeast corner of tract two, there's a lot of forestry. And then on the, yes, okay, good, thank you, because otherwise people are like, "What is he talking about?" Yeah, you just see those really darkened areas there, forestry. And I, at the very least, I'd like to know, and it sounds like I'm seeing some nodding heads, I'd like to see what can be done to preserve-
Can I offer some background to the council? I've been in that neighborhood longer than anyone else around, and that property was originally intended to be a park.
We can-
Got it. But we can handle that offline, especially if we're gonna defer this, yeah.
Thank you for that, thank you for that. So those would be kind of the, the areas I would want us to think about, maybe when we go out there. Is there, just ahead of time, is there any thing that would prevent us from the preservation, Mr. Zito, of those things?
No, sir, if you go back to the slide plane, I mean, two of those areas are, I mean, there's a couple ponds in them, but when you look at the southwest corner, you see that we've limited the encroachment into that area, and then on the southeast corner, you can see that we've not proposed any development along the entire east side and wrapping around on the south.
I think it's, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So we've taken the two kind of larger swaths of those areas in an attempt to preserve them. And that's what gets shown at the specific plan station.
I think it will be worth our time to try and reduce that footprint more, and then I think track one is the one where it's just all better off, there's just no preservation. So those are the things I would want to know as we head out there. And then the thing you're not gonna like, not you, but some of the neighbors. And I'm really glad, Varan, that you mentioned your lineage in terms of Ms. Looper, who's a fellow teacher, and you mentioned that history of integration-segregation. Look, it is public record where I live, and where I live is in a three-plex. I have lived in that three-plex since 2012, maybe 13. As of this February, that is a dozen years. The days must be behind us of believing people who live in duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, 12-plexes, 24-plexes apartments are more prone to criminal activity.
That's not who you're saying.
No, 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 hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. That is literally, literally what I just heard. I literally just heard a fear of who, of a turnover of people, and I, I am imploring this city to hear me as a millennial, as a 42-year-old, say to you, as someone who makes $62,000 a year, working two jobs, I cannot afford to buy a single-family home in this city right now. I have student loan debts because this society asked me to go to college, and so I did, and I can't afford to buy a single-family home. An apartment is what I can afford. And that is what a lot of millennials have chosen, is to rent rather than own a home. The stigma of apartment complexes must go away. Let me also complicate that by saying I understand where that fear comes from because a lot of the apartments- of the apartments, not like mine, built 100 years ago, that fostered a sense of who your neighbor is and who your community is. But the apartments of the 70s, the 80s, the 90s, where there's just no sense of community in the literal design of the apartments themselves, that has led to cyclical poverty, cyclical crime. If you don't know what I'm talking about, drive 10th Street, go 122nd around Penn and May. These apartments where there was never a thought in creating a design where you are constantly aware of who your neighbors are and fostering a sense of community, that's not how they designed them in the 70s and 80s and 90s. And that's what I would like, thank you for that, because that's the other question as this two-week deferment. You're exactly right. The question must be, what is the design of these apartments that lends itself to a sense of community? If you do not know what I am talking about, then it might really, especially for some council members and some city leaders, if you do not understand what I am talking about, it is really worth your time to sit with planning staff who do know what I am talking about in terms of the literal layout and design of apartment complexes. There are some that foster cyclical crime, cyclical poverty, a lack of community, and then there are those who do not. I'll conclude by saying this, because some people, you may say I'm a dreamer, I am not. The Brighton in my neighborhood, the Passo, the Brighton, once upon a time, 29th Street went right through from Passo Drive to Charter. As recently as the 1990s, when this happened, you had rows of apartments on both sides of 29th Street. It was drugs, it was crime. I know this because I've spoken to police officers who are retired who live just a couple streets over. Do you know how we remedied it? Design. We closed off 29th Street. We created an entire expansive lawn as a courtyard, where every day now, I see people walking their dogs every morning, going to coffee, going to breakfast. The design, the way, the way we lay out apartment complexes determined how people think about themselves in the apartments and in that community. People who live in apartments are not inherently biologically destined to commit crimes. To believe that, whoo, that is a huge problem. And it is born from the history of white supremacy that told us that there were certain people who were less than. I will not sit up here and let that continue. So I think the opportunity, Mark, the opportunity, and you, better than most people, because we've spoken for years, understand what I am saying when I talk about the literal design of apartments. I think to mitigate the concerns the neighbors have about the many, 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 many units, more than a three-plex, that are going to move into this area, I think we need to be having a conversation about what is the actual design, what best practices can we bring when it comes to an apartment design that is going to give this area, these apartments, a sense of the single families who will often be living within these apartments. That's, I think, the challenge. Can we preserve green space? Can we design these apartments in such a way that they foster a sense of belonging and community? This, too, will be the challenge with the Maps for Homelessness Housing that we do. We, we can't just build housing and think it's going to magically work out. We have the planning director sitting right here, right now, and I promise you, he would double down on what I am saying and go further with the actual best practices that I don't know, because I am an English teacher. But I like to study and read, and that's how I know that the design matters. And I don't know, Councilman, those would be my guidance at your ward. If you don't like what I'm saying, that's totally fine, but I'm just saying the green space preservation and the literal layout and design of these apartments is going to determine the harmony in this area.
Let's take two weeks deferment. I'll move for that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes, votes for a two-week defer. Passed unanimously. All right. Item D was previously deferred, which brings us to item E. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval, rezoning 851 to Southwest 29th from R1 to PUD 2029. This was deferred from December 3rd, and Councilwoman Peck, the only person signed up to speak is Kelly Work.
All right. Before we have Mr. Work come up and speak, and then also the applicant and his representation to speak, I just want to talk briefly about what a council member's job is that many of you have sat through this morning in the way that we have to balance decision-making. So when this item came out, I immediately received notes from the immediately adjacent neighbors. And since that time, their activism has resulted in 698 protest letters. So let me be real clear, 698 protest letters. Now, at the beginning, though, before all of those protest letters came in, I asked the residents and the applicant to get together and see if there was an agreement that could come to so that they would retract their protest and, you know, find something that would work. Obviously, in that time, the protest has grown. So what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to have, David, you or Kelly can go first, I don't really have a preference, whatever works for y'all. But let's talk about the process that got us to where we're at today. I believe that we need to read into the record the amendments that you have agreed to, and I'd like to do that and pass that amendment before we get to the vote on the item. So if we can just start there, maybe, and-
Sure. David Box, 522, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Caitlin Turner is also here with me in my office. She's going to walk through some of the details of the changes that have been made. It is worth noting that there's only one person signed up to speak, despite the number of protest letters, and that is in large part because of the work by Kelly and his clients, as well as Caitlin and, and my client. So there were, I think, at least two neighborhood meetings that took place on this project, and it has evolved significantly through the time after we filed it. So we went to Planning Commission first, and then we put the hearing on, and it was ultimately deferred to come back to another hearing to go address concerns that had been made, or had been put forward by the neighbors. Primarily at the time, one of the biggest concerns raised was traffic. 29th Street between County Line and Council is primarily a two-lane road, and County Line and 29th at that intersection is a two-lane intersection controlled by stop signs. As you get closer to Council, it is four-lane, and there's a signalization at that intersection, but the balance of 29th is a two-lane road. This area of the city has seen more growth perhaps than any other area of the city for a multitude of reasons, some of which are school-related, some of which are the turnpike. But there's been a significant number of new developments that have happened without a significant amount of infrastructure improvements in the area. So I told my client that the only way that I thought that this deal could get done is if they were able to find a way to help fix a problem that exists in the infrastructure for traffic. So they retained an engineering firm and began the process of looking at what it would look like to improve 29th and the intersection of County Line and 29th. And what they have agreed to do, and what we have worked towards with the Public Works Department, is my client, at their cost, will improve 29th Street to ensure that the entire mile of 29th Street from County Line to Council is widened to four-lane. In addition, they will improve the intersection of County Line and 29th to, to be signalized as well as widened pursuant to what Public Works has asked us to do for turning lanes, et cetera. With that, you have, I think, a wonderful opportunity to have a, a stretch of road that without this developer would not get improved. My understanding is it's not on the list of projects that would be up for the next bond project, so what you're really looking like, looking at is a 20-plus-year timeframe for any hope of any improvements in this. It's already, the site's already zoned R1, so if this were to go away, it would likely be developed R1, you just wouldn't have any improvements to the infrastructure. So here, through the modifications we've made with setbacks and density and height and all of the design-related things for this project, in addition to the infrastructure piece I just said, I think on balance, what you now have is a project that will benefit this community. It's worth noting that staff, in their independent analysis, prior to the discussion of the street improvement, based upon Conference of Plan policies, does recommend approval of this. All we've done since the time that staff has recommended approval is make this project more compatible and better. So I am happy to report that as of late yesterday evening, my client, as well as Mr. Work's clients, have engaged in a letter agreement signed by all parties by which we are now in agreement that the protest, and he'll, he'll get to the podium and do this, but the protest, in terms of the folks that live to the east, has been removed, and we, we now have an MDS of the PUD that has been agreed to by all parties and submitted to Oklahoma City's planning staff. So, Councilwoman, I'm not sure what path you want to take. Maybe Mr. Work or Ms. Turner can walk through what those amendments need to look like for a vote.
Sure. And just for, one second, for the body's information, Southwest 29th Street was resurfaced in the 2017 GEO Bond funding, so the two-lane road on 29th is fairly new right now. County Line Road, however, is in atrocious shape and is on my, it'll get on the GEO Bond list if I have to wrestle somebody for it list for improvements. As you can see by the image that's on the screen, all of this housing developments are in some stage of construction for the most part. Some of it is still in the design stage, but a lot of these houses are coming. So there is a significant amount of development out here, and the neighbors are very concerned about the traffic. And obviously, adding an apartment complex of multiple buildings, you know, just continues to increase that concern. I think, David, what I would like to do next is give Mr. Work an opportunity to speak, and then we can shift to Caitlin to read in the amendment, if that works for you, Kelly.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Kelly Work, and my address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304. And I am here representing a group, a core group of homeowners within the Shox Western Heights Edition neighborhood, which is the single-family neighborhood that is immediately adjacent to the subject property to the east. And as you can see from the aerial photo that is displayed, those homes that are along Eagle Lane there front directly towards the Eagle Lane and just directly across from this subject property. So they, as, as has already been mentioned, once the application was filed and notice went out, these neighbors organized in response to it and, under the name that they gave the group of neighborhood advocates, and I know many of you have received communications from, from their neighborhood and beyond in response to the, to the PUD. I can confirm today that we have reached an agreement, a compromise agreement, on the terms of the PUD. And the, the, that agreement is reflected in the master design statement and the exhibits that have been submitted yesterday and reflect the revision date of December 16, 2024. Under the terms of the agreement, the PUD has been amended in a number of ways, and it will, it has reduced the maximum density that will be allowed for the number of residential units. The total number of units also has been reduced from the original proposal. The landscaping requirements have been enhanced, and a specific landscaping plan has been added as an exhibit that the development will be required to comply with. The building setbacks have been increased, more restrictive height limits have been imposed, and greater screening requirements have been included. There are also limitations on access that have been made a part of the PUD, including no access from the subject property to Eagle Lane to the east. So based on the agreement that we have reached with the developer and with these amendments that have now been submitted in connection with the application, and of course, has, has already been mentioned, those amendments will require the council's approval today, since they've been made since the recommendation of the Planning Commission. On behalf of our steering committee for the Neighborhood Advocates Group, we are withdrawing our protest today, and we're ready for this PUD 2029 as amended with council's approval, of course, for it to move forward to approval. The, I, I had some concern there might be other persons here planning to speak because the agreement really didn't come together until late yesterday, but apparently, we've been able to get the word out to the, to the interested parties, which I am grateful for. For our group, for this, particularly for this Shox Western Heights Edition neighborhood, these amendments that have been agreed to in the PUD will significantly minimize the impact that this proposed development will have on the area. And based on that, we were willing to enter into this agreement and withdraw our protest today. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you, that you may have.
Mr. Work, any idea of the 698 protest letters, how many you might be speaking on behalf of?
I honestly, I, I really can't say. The, I will tell you that the, the, the core organizing group have been the residents within the Shox Western Heights neighborhood, as I'm sure you're aware. And I think the, the, and they have been communicating through social media with kind of the larger group, and I think, and have been keeping them informed of the progress. And I think the, the fact that it was, you know, really late yesterday before we finally reached agreement, I, I wasn't sure whether the word would get out, but I'm, it apparently did get out, and I'm, I'm glad for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin, would you like to make the amendment official for me so that we can take a first vote on that, and then I'll have some more comments following it?
Yes. Caitlin Turner, 522, Call Core Drive. The following amendments are in accordance with the master design statement dated December 16, 2024. That has been submitted to staff, and they have confirmed receipt. Amendment to the master design statement modifying Section 8 to prohibit administrative amendments. Section 8.1, limiting the number of residential units to 11 units per acre and 264 units, and specifying that layout shall be in accordance with the revised Exhibit B. Section 9.2, specifying that landscaping regulations shall be in accordance with the new Exhibit D. Section 9.4, to specify the location of the wall along the east side of the development. Section 9.13, to reduce the height of buildings 1, 2, and 3, as shown on Exhibit B, as well as the clubhouse. Section 9.14, to increase the setback along the east and specify what may be located within the east setback area. That's a lot, so if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask, but for motion purposes.
Well, as you can imagine, what a difficult position I must be in today. I want to appreciate the applicant and Mr. Work for their efforts, working together on behalf of the residents of Ward 3. I am not certain, however, that the steering committee, while in agreement with this, I, I still think they're just trying to swallow a pill, if you will, you know, and settle. And I know that there are more people who maybe feel like today that this agreement was come to and they no longer have a voice, but I was elected to be their voice. was come to, and they no longer have a voice. But I was elected to be their voice, and I am here working for them in their absence. And so I'm very concerned about how that development is going to impact, even with the road improvements, even with the changes in the layout. So I really think that I'm ready to actually make a motion you're not going to love.
Counselor woman, may I?
Sure.
Wait, sorry.
Of course. Anybody else that has any comments, too?
I mean, in the spirit of all of us talking outside of our wards and everything this morning, I just, and, okay, are you, that's yours?
No, I've...
Okay. So in looking at all of this and everything that we're working through and all of the concessions that have been made and the different movements that have been going on, the housing needs that we're needing and the ones that we keep talking about, how we're moving around and the green spaces, I mean, like, this seems to fit just about everything that we have and that we've been looking for and what we want to see in some of our neighborhoods. And I can't even imagine the position that you find yourself in right now, and not to overstep and not to offend you in any way.
I feel like you're about to, though. That's like, if, but.
If, but.
Yeah. So you understand that the Shox neighborhood is two-and-a-half-acre lots. And with the housing developments on both sides coming on 29th Street, it's a lot.
And I understand that. And I don't believe we had anybody else speaking or signed up, so.
We had someone just sign up. Is it Amy Martin? Is that what it says? I don't know.
Hi, my name's Amy Martin, and I live at 3300 South Eagle Lane. I'm part of the Your Neighborhood Advocates. I want to let everybody know, when we let everybody know last night, we got a lot of thank yous, a lot of people that were incredibly appreciative of all the hard work that we've done to knock this down from 396 units down to 262 and to keep all the green space. So we do not want to protest this. We do ask that you pass this. We have come to realize that this is the best that we can get. And for me personally, that second house in on Eagle Lane, that's mine. To have a 260-foot setback, when they, when we started negotiating again, and David Box sent that, and we saw that, we were like, okay, that's something. That was the first time, I can tell you, that I felt anybody heard what we had to say about the character of our neighborhood. We're on 2.8 acres. We didn't want to look at 40-foot buildings. So when he came back with the 260-foot setback, we were like, okay, we can do this. We can do this with trees. We didn't want it still to be three-story. When he knocked it down to two, we said we can live with that. So as people who, yes, we sent you a lot of protest letters, and we did a lot of work for this.
698.
Actually, actually, Barbara.
Maybe more.
It was more. We'll let that go. It was more. But I can tell you, but I can tell you, people are appreciative and are thankful. People are in shock and awe that we actually got this project reduced by a third. This has taken four months in my life. I have knocked on thousands and thousands of doors, and I feel we have been very, very, very respectful of a process that has not been very respectful to us. So we've done all this work to get here. I never thought I'd say this, but please, just pass this and let me get on with my life, and let me look at a row of trees. I can live with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Well, I was going to ask for you, if we can move for approval.
I'm going to need you. Hold on a second.
There's one more who's signed up, and I can't make out the name, but he lives on...
If my hand would shake it.
Okay. Just say your name and address when you come to the...
James Zagali, 3000 South Eagle Lane. I've got the junkyard there at the beginning. When this first started, to say I was opposed to it is an understatement. You can go back at the Planning Commission, see it. Where we started, I was very against, through countless hours of my neighbors, of my community, we have gotten to a plan that we can all work with. Everyone I've talked to, both in person, online, text messages, calls, they've been like, you got what? They saw the work. This isn't a little step. This wasn't, oh, it's going to get passed anyways. This was huge. This was huge. And everyone I have talked to, I've gotten nothing but positive responses to where we have gotten. And a no vote would absolutely demolish everything that we have accomplished. I'll be honest, I don't have it in us to do this again. Please.
Well, I am so...
Let our work stand.
James, thank you for speaking, and Amy, as well, because before the two of you spoke, all I had to go on was the attorneys, and you know what we all think about that. So...
We're here for a reason.
I was ready to deny this, but I can't even begin to express my gratitude for you guys, especially the last two weeks. I know it's been a hard press. I know it's the holidays. And with your blessing, then I will move for approval.
Thank you.
If I may back up, we didn't actually adopt the amendment.
Oh, crap.
Yeah, amendments first, please, because that's the important.
And Amy was asking about 9.17 specific plan. Did you mention that as part of your, I mean, it's, is this, you wish to adopt the amendment as basically has been presented on writing to the clerk?
Correct.
Then that's fine.
Yes.
Okay. And you wish to make the motion to adopt that amendment?
Adopt the amendment, yes.
That they presented in writing. Okay.
No, I'm just going to stare at it for a minute.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the amendment. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Now we're back on Item E as amended.
And I would like to move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. 11F is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval. Rezoning 1328 East Hefner Road from R1 to PUD 2031. This was deferred from November 19th. Councilman Lee Cooper, no one to sign up to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do we have anyone who is speaking on this item?
Anyone.
Mark?
Anyone who's what?
Good morning. Mark Sitzow, Johnson Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. Before you is a zoning application that seeks to allow kind of various commercial uses. I think at one point, there was planned to be kind of an indoor gymnasium for gymnastics and other training-type facilities. We've received no protest. Staff recommended approval. It was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Move for adoption.
This is on Item F, 11F. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item G is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval. Rezoning 620 North Cemetery Road from PUD 1504 to PUD 2035. Darn it, Councilwoman Peck stepped out.
Anyone to speak on this?
Oh, no, this is, this is Ward 3, Councilman Stone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that...
Yeah, sorry, but she stepped out. So we will come back to it. Item H is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 15601 North County Line Road from R1 and AA to PUD 2037, Councilman Carter. No one has signed up to speak.
Okay. Well, subject to the summary of technical evaluations and whatnot, then I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item I is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval. Rezoning 11605 North Morgan Road from AA to PUD 2038. Back to you, Councilman Carter. Nobody has signed up.
I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item J is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval. Rezoning 345 West I-240 Service Road from PUD 1826 to PUD 2039. And Councilman Stone, we do have one person signed up to speak in protest.
Okay. Let's go ahead and have him come up, please.
All right. Bill Condon?
He left.
Okay. Not here. All right. Back to you.
Yeah, the applicant made a request that we defer this item to February 11th.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion.
What's the, what's the, you think it's the 14th? Yeah, that doesn't feel right. I think that's a Friday.
Oh, February.
February 11th. Okay. That's the motion, then. It will take electronically. February 11th. We have a motion and a second to defer it to February 11th. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Item K. This has a couple of amendments. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. Rezoning 4235 Northeast 122nd from SPUD 1293 to SPUD 1651. This was deferred from November 19th. And Councilman Lee Cooper, we have a couple of people signed up to speak. Looks like both may be in some level of opposition.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This is what is, I think, going to be coming in the future. And so I'm interested to hear how residents, those who will speak today, I believe, we've been working to get some, some of the groundwork laid for Mr. Work and Mr. Box, but we have those who are speaking. I want you to come.
Okay. Well, one of them was Kelly Work, and the other is Jeff McDonald. I don't know if they're working together or not, but we can start with you, Kelly.
Certainly. Thank you. Yes, Mayor and members of the council, my name is Kelly Work. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304. And I'm here in connection with SPUD 1651 on behalf of several of the neighboring residents to the north and west there. As you can see, the property there is located at the northwest corner of Northeast 122nd and Coal Train. The individual owners that I represent include Bob and Gala Heine, who are directly to the north, Chris Johnson and his family that are, have their home directly to the west, and then Carl Razkowski and his family, which are to the west of Mr. Johnson, and then Stephanie and Doug Augburn, who are to the northwest, they're west of the Heine property. We have been negotiating with the applicant since the Planning Commission, both before and since the Planning Commission, and we've reached an agreement with the applicant on the terms of the SPUD. This is a, will be a proposed multifamily residential development on this corner. Under the terms of the agreement, there have been reductions in the density and the maximum number of residential units. They've also increased the building setback. They have provided for enhanced landscaping. There'll be a landscaping buffer both along the north boundary and along the west boundary, and the required screening along the north and west boundary has also been enhanced. And with those changes that are, part of which are included in the amendment, that is, that will require the council to approve today, we're satisfied with the, with the proposed SPUD and are willing for it to move to approval by the council. I have heard from, I know, I don't know, did Mr. McDonald arrive today? Yes, he's here. I'll let him speak for himself. I wasn't sure if he was going to be able to make it. But in any event, the, that's, that's the report from the persons that I represent, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then Jeff McDonald?
Hello, my name is Jeff McDonald at 12620 Hoffman Road. Would you mind putting the picture, the aerial picture back up there, everything? So I live at the end of Hoffman Road, which is at the lowest possible point for all the drainage for this area. As you can see, the piece of land that's being developed or wanting to be developed is one house on about four and a half acres. They've gone from one house to four to five houses as the next development, to now we're trying to put 55 units or thereabout on there. That's going to remove a lot of land, and I'm concerned about the drainage washing away my house, located at the end of Hoffman, where we already have drainage issues. I'm 53 years old. I don't have the time nor the power to rebuild my house if it gets washed away. I've only lived there for a little bit over a year, and the neighbors there tell me that is a big concern of theirs as well. So I would like you to go on record about my concern. My, if my house does get washed away, I think I have to prove negligence on the part of the people that sign off on things, which is very hard to do. So that means I'm really, I don't have a canoe to even get in. And if I don't go with this, the, David Box will probably take you to court and sue you, and then take us to district court and sue. And then everything that we have worked for, or my neighbors have worked for, is off the board, and they have a free rein. So I can't oppose it because I have no choice but to accept it because of the way things go. But I would like to go on record about my drainage concerns, my house being possibly flooded, my neighbor's house is possibly being flooded, and there needs to be some sort of recourse that we have with the developer or with the city where we don't have to hire an attorney and come back and get our properties rebuilt. Again, my name's Jeff McDonald. I just wanted to go on record for drainage concerns. So I also observed a lot of people representing today talking about spuds. I don't think that the people that you represent are looking for density any longer, and we might need to revisit our city plan. Density is what causes the overflow for the schools. So I think that we need to stick with letting places like this stay, and let the, let the forests which you have in your city plan that you're cutting down for this development also stay, the upland forests and those trees. So anyway, it's just my two cents. I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Lee Cooper, that concludes those who signed up.
All right. You've, you've heard the concerns certainly from Mr. McDonald, and we have had conversations. I believe Mr. Works is representing most who are in that area. So I do want this to move forward, so I'll move for adoption.
Oh, yeah, let's do the amendments.
We need to do the amendment first. So, yeah, we can start with K1, the amendment to the master design statement.
And if I may, sorry, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I just want to make sure that the most recent master design statement is what the amendment reflects. So it is the master design statement dated December 17th, 2024, submitted to staff, amending Section 5 to add under the building setback line west provision, the words, "The four multifamily structures and the four detached garages referenced above," under Section 6, adding the words, "SPUD boundaries." And under 7, we clarify a 20-foot landscape buffer along the north boundary, and the west setback shall contain a 25-foot landscape buffer along the west boundary. And then a sentence added to the end that says, "The existing trees within the landscape buffer area shall be preserved, including trees measuring 2-inch caliper or above and excluding dead or diseased trees. The minimum number of trees shall be removed..." The minimum number of trees shall be removed," excuse me, "the minimum number of trees shall be removed to install the fence outlined in section six above."
Okay, move for adoption of K-1.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Move for the amendment of the master design statement and K-2.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the second amendment found at K-2. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Move for adoption of K-3, the ordinance of final hearing.
We have a motion and a second, and this requires seven votes due to the...
If I may, real quick, my, my belief was that with the adoption of the amended MDS, Mr. Work's protest-
Oh, okay.
-is removed, and therefore we are under the 50% threshold.
Legally achieve that?
I'm not sure if that has been received in writing and if the protest has been recalculated.
So staff did run those figures. There are only two legal protests, both of which Mr. Work represents, and his statement to formally withdraw upon the adoption of the amended MDS-
Okay.
-is what we had worked out with staff.
Then that's sufficient.
Okay. The attorney has spoken. We consider that the protest has been withdrawn, and therefore seven votes are not required. A mere, simple majority. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes seven to one. Okay, thank you. Next up is item L. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 217 Northwest 150th from PUD 1136 to SPUD 1672. Councilman Lee Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item M is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 1612 Northeast 16th from R-1 and R-2 to SPUD 1676. Councilman Lee Cooper, nobody has signed up to speak.
Anyone?
Mark Sitzow, Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. This is actually an interesting case in that the vast majority of this land is already zoned for duplexes. This is an SPUD to allow for duplexes, but because of the lot widths that these are, it actually prevents us from dividing and selling each unit of the duplex individually. These are Okura lots, and through that program, it has to be a for-sale product, and so the SPUD reduces the minimum lot width, which ultimately allows us to offer a for-sale product on these homes. With that, happy to answer any questions.
I've already seen this with a Okura, so move for adoption.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item N is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 515 Northeast 1st from PUD 1132 and DSHA to SPUD 1678 and DSHA. Councilman Lee Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Mark Sitzow, Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. This is the final portion of the, this is the final phase of the Hill. This has sat vacant for quite some time. The new project will be a mix of detached and attached single-family product. There have been significant numbers of, or significant number of meetings with the neighborhood to get us to this point. Staff and planning commission both recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Once again, property that has just come through- Okura, and I'm excited to see this development finally being finished, and so excited about this move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item O is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 2324 West Park Place from R-2 to SPUD 1679. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
Yes, this is just to add a accessory dwelling unit to the property, so I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item P is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing some easements and right-of-way along North May. Councilman Stone cipher, no one has signed up to speak.
If no one's signed up, then I'll move for approval, please.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item Q is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing a portion of the north-south statutory right-of-way and portions of Anton Klassen's North Broadway Edition, west of I-235 and between 16th and 13th. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, before we exit zoning, I'm told that Councilman Carter has permission to carry item G.
Yes.
So this is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 620 North Cemetery Road from PUD 1504 to PUD 2035. No one has signed up to speak.
And with that, we'll move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, our, we had a noticed item, item Z, under items for individual consideration. This was noticed in time, but after the original distribution of the agenda, but you all should have received this, and it should be at your place. This is to enter an executive session on advice of the municipal councilor to receive confidential communications regarding the case of Oklahoma County, the City of OKC. Our attorneys are up against a time crunch with the commitment soon afternoon, and so I'm gonna bring this item forward now to handle, and then we'll go into executive session, deal with that, and then come back for the remainder of our docket. And I apologize to anyone here who's for these other items. Unfortunately, we've got little choice but to handle this now while our attorneys are still available. So if we could take a motion to go into executive session on item 11Z. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will now go into that executive session, and we will return.
All right, we are back. And picking up where we left off, where item R, R, S, T, and all the many votes therein, looks like there's at least potentially six or so, seven, are all related. No, I'm sorry, tease the park fees. R and S are all related to each other. We already had a presentation on this, but we do have amendments, and I don't know where we want to begin on maybe explaining those amendments.
I was hoping that maybe Laura could start off walking through the amendments, and then we have some people here today in support of the amendments that would like to speak, so maybe Laura could kind of walk through it briefly, and then we'll hear from those people here, if that's okay with you.
Sounds good. And also, yeah, we have some people who've signed up to speak, but maybe let's hear about the amendments first, and then we'll hear from the citizens.
Sure. So there are multiple amendments, as Councilman Stonecifer just mentioned, on the agenda for today. The first is for the Chapter 13 licensing ordinance regarding home sharing, and that proposed amendment would reduce the occupancy to be calculated rather than just, I think, in the previous iteration, it was just a cap of 16, but this would reduce the calculation to be the number of bedrooms times two and then plus two in case there are any children who are also, or, you know, other folks who are staying at the accommodations.
And can we stop right there on that one?
Sure.
There were several people that reached out to me, including an HOA president and two HOAs, and they were having problems with what they called "party pads," where people would rent the house out. Maybe it's a three-bedroom house, but it has a large pool, and there might be 50, 60 people in the backyard, which creates a parking problem, ingress egress for the fire, first responders, and not to say that the noise and the disturbance to the people that live around there. And so these people came up with the idea, you know, we're not opposed to these, we just want some type of way to make sure we don't end up with 60 people in the backyard partying on Friday and Saturday night, not there during the day. And so the idea was, if we look at the number of bedrooms and put two to a bedroom and apply that not only to the house, the bedroom, and the backyard, then we solve
So that's the proposed amendment to Chapter 13. And then the Chapter 59, which is the zoning ordinance, there are multiple amendments proposed to that also. One being just sort of a cleanup matter that would change the, included a change to the definition of home sharing, so that it matches what is proposed in the Chapter 13 ordinance, because we don't want to be amending definition in one place and then not having it match in the other. So that was one that was proposed by staff. And then the others are to strengthen language for the consideration by the Board of Adjustment using the homeowners association, and if they have any restrictive covenants, that those could be used as a basis for denial. Also, that the Board of Adjustment can consider traffic issues, you know, such as cul-de-sacs, or if they're particularly narrow streets, or if there might be issues for first responders accessing the neighborhood.
Can we stop there for just a second? And the input I received on that was some felt that the Board of Adjustments did not have specific enough guidance on when they could reject something. And one of the things that the HOAs were complaining about, well, we're an HOA, we don't have a lot of money, we do have a restrictive covenant that says these can't be conducted in our neighborhood. But it takes money to go to district court to go fight that battle, which the HOA oftentimes doesn't have the money. And so by putting that, those, putting some teeth in what the Board of Adjustment looks at, such as a restrictive covenant, they can deny it based upon a restrictive covenant that's filed a public record, that you knew about it. When you bought the house, if you looked at the restrictive covenant, said, these are the things you can't do with that house, one of which is have an Airbnb.
So on that note, because I've been confused as I've heard that one, Councilman, and I hear it, legally, I guess the confusion I continue to have is, if we were to put that in place, this, where the BOA can look at the restrictive covenant, I've had some confusion as to whether or not legally, the Board of Adjustment would be able to honor that, and we would be on sound legal footing. I've heard from, sometimes from staff, that like, you can, that's a suggestion, like, that they could, you see what I'm saying, Councilman?
I've taken a look at it, and I'm comfortable with the fact that you can put in there, is there a cul-de-sac? Is there narrow roads? Is there an ingress egress problem? And those are all factors you can give to the Board of Adjustments, but you use it in an including phrase, paragraph, not just limited to. And so the Board of Adjustment has to have some flexibility, because all streets are different, all cul-de-sacs are different. And one nice thing about, if you have a problem in a neighborhood, if the Board of Adjustment says, we're not going to give you a special permit, special use permit, because there is already a covenant, you're saving the HOA a ton of money not having to go to the district court and filing a lawsuit. And I'm perfectly comfortable with that as being enforceable after looking at it.
I guess, I'm trying to clarify my question. I do hear what you're saying. I guess my concern is that it still seems like it's at the discretion, so let's say there's two HOAs, right? And one of them, you have someone in one HOA who comes and says, I would like to do this home share, and based on, so now they deny, like, the BOA denies the request because of the covenant. But then Neighborhood B comes and has a similar request, and the BOA says, you can operate this home share. I guess, is there legal consistency across all cases? Or is it a suggestion, is my question? Because I keep hearing some conflicting information on this. Do you follow what I'm saying, Councilman?
Yeah, totally. And when you look at A and B, let me give you an example. I was the president of an HOA. It had a restrictive covenant. The thing that made it difficult when people violated those covenants was we had to go file a lawsuit. And what we're trying to avoid is to say, Board of Adjustment, if there's a restrictive covenant, and the HOAs show up and want the restrictive covenant enforced, the Board of Adjustment can legally do that. And it saves months and months and months, you know how long it takes for a district court action? Look at, we look at this all the time in executive session. Once a district court action's filed, there's interrogatories, requests for documents, depositions, pre-trials, et cetera, et cetera, motion practice, this goes on for months. So we're not helping the HOA out by getting some early resolution. This gives the Board of Adjustments the authority to take care of this problem quickly, instead of two years in litigation.
Okay. So to clarify, when, if we put this in place, that the BOA has to honor restrictive covenants which restrict home share, that would apply across the board to any neighborhood within HOA that has a restrictive covenant?
And here's where I've seen this come up before. For example, somebody wants to apply for a special use permit, and notice is given. And then the HOA, through its president, or its secretary, or treasurer, shows up and says, we have a restrictive covenant that doesn't allow that. That lets the Board of Adjustment enforce it, instead of forcing, like I said, a district court action, which oftentimes the HOA doesn't have the money to pay for.
Sure. Laura?
Sure. So what I would say is that this is going to be very fact-specific, based on each HOA and what each of their covenants say, and that that information actually ends up getting presented to the board. So it's not going, it's not a one-size-fits-all necessarily, if that makes sense.
Councilman, can I inter, okay, because I think I'm on the same page with you, correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm hearing you say, and what I have also heard in various other conversations, is that the city cannot enforce HOA covenants.
That is what I am saying, yes, Councilman.
What it sounds like we're doing is granting the permission for a city body to essentially enforce an HOA covenant. Is that, so you're asking, what is the difference, like, why is this allowable in these other cases?
That is correct.
It is not allowable.
Thank you for helping me out there.
So this allows for the Board of Adjustment to be able to consider it? Because in most circumstances, the Board isn't looking at restrictive covenants. And, you know, neighborhoods show up, and they say, oh, we have a covenant that prohibits this kind of fence, or whatever it might be, that the Board would otherwise then be allowed, would be allowing, based on the zoning. So this is just including it as a factor that they can consider.
But the HOA still has to present it themselves, the city staff's not providing that information, we're not doing, staff's not doing research on the covenants and restrictions, is that correct?
Correct.
So is that the differentiating factor, then, that maybe we're talking about? Question mark.
I'm still hearing that the city would be essentially, sorry. I'm still hearing that the city would essentially be enforcing, like, it would have to come up sort of organically from the HOA, but that we would still be considering and then potentially taking action to enforce an HOA covenant.
Do you have any legal authority that says that? Because what I'm looking at is-
It's what I've been told by staff multiple times, in different instances.
Yeah, we're hearing this from staff, Councilman. This is not, and by the way, I'm not mad, this isn't, I have no opinion one way or the other.
Like, I believe this is a conversation with, and the example I'll give, since we're giving some examples, is when the urban hen ordinance came up, that was a question. Can we just say, these areas that have these HOA covenants, we can't have those? And the answer to us was, we can't enforce that.
And I think the better way to analyze this is, we have a great staff, and they're important, but we have to rely on our municipal councillor's office to tell us what we can do and what we can't do. And they looked at this and said, we can do this, we can make it a factor that's considered by the Board of Adjustment. That's why we're here today. So I'm comfortable with, I'm just about finished, I'm sorry. I'm comfortable with my municipal councillor's office telling me we can make this zoning amendment.
So Laura, there are two words I'm hearing right now that give me pause. One is that the Board of Adjustment can, and it's the verb here, consider. Good, good. This is where that English professor stuff comes out. They can consider. That does not mean they must use. And it's that consideration, and then the second word that stands out to me is factor. It is a factor. In each of those instances, the Board of Adjustment would sit up here, good, I got the lawyer's attention, and I'm not trying, again, I'm not on either side of this, I don't want you to, I'm not like trying to advocate one way or the other, I just want some clarification, because if we are saying through this proposal that the Board of Adjustment can consider an HOA's restrictive covenant, they can, like, we would pass this, they can consider it, they're not bound by it. And that's the confusion that's about to happen out in the neighborhoods within HOA. They're going to think, when we pass this today, that that means that the Board of Adjustment is now bound, and that's the different verbs, consider versus binding. We are not, this is not bound, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it does, it does, and that's fine, I just want that clarification. We're not, we're, if we pass this, we're not saying to the Board of Adjustment that they are bound going forward when someone comes up to that podium and says, we have a restrictive covenant that says we do not want home share in our neighborhood, it's right here in our covenant. When they do that, the Board, according to the language I'm hearing, can consider it all across these things, but they are not bound to then say, oh, it's in your thing? We must, that's the other word, we must deny it because it's in your thing. That, if I'm hearing this correctly, we are not saying that they are bound, that they are restricted, that they must then, they being the BOA, say no. Is that correct, or am I having a misunderstanding?
The language that was-
Hang on, hang on, I'm sorry, Councilman, I need to hear this from legal, because for me, this is a word and legal conversation now.
So the amendment, as it is drafted, says may consider as a basis for denial. So it is not mandatory.
And when it says may consider, it gives several different factors, not just one factor. It's, and if, if the Board of Adjustment decides to ignore that factor, the HOA can still go to the district court and file a lawsuit and enforce the restrictive covenant. This is just trying to help HOA, so they don't have to spend a bunch of dollars on legal fees.
I support it, what I am saying, and I just want to go on the record right now, it is important for neighborhoods within HOA to understand that even with our inclusion of these various factors, that now the HOA, or sorry, the BOA can consider in the application for home share, those are all factors they can consider, that the BOA can consider. They are not bound by, and they must not reject an application because it meets those factors. The BOA would still have, at its subjective discretion, the ability to say yes to the home share. And that's what I want the HOAs to know, and here's why. Word two, I want them to know that before I get angry emails and phone calls saying, but now wait a second, you all passed these changes, you said these were things they could consider, and yet we just had an application the BOA approved. So I don't want to set these folk up for a false sense of we've offered them protections, we've offered them through this particular amendment, factors for the BOA to consider that right now they do not have consideration toward, but they will. I hope I am being very clear in my language right now. I am trying to be crystal clear in my language right now, actually.
I think we're saying the same thing. Can you read the language again, the may consider?
I believe it says may consider as a basis for denial.
We've got it. We're saying exactly what you're saying, may consider, and it's one of the factors.
Okay. Mayor, did you understand what I am saying there? Okay. You just had a look over earlier, and I just wanted to make sure you were hearing what I was saying.
No, no. Okay. So have we fully explained all the amendments, or just one of them?
Nope, I covered both Chapter 13 and Chapter 59.
All right, very good. Well, then, why don't we call up our residents who've signed up to speak?
Can I ask a quick question about the amendments, though? So my understanding was that the one-night stay provision was part of trying to limit the party houses situation, but that we're really, we're going to transition to using the occupancy limits as the, our path to addressing that, and remove the one-night, or, sorry, inability to book a one-night stay. Did that get included in the amendment?
We did away with two days.
Sorry.
And that was based upon Gary Jones did some analysis that he sent to us with four factors, that is entitled, Our Concerns With Two-Night Minimum Stay Provisions. The one that was most impactful to me was number four, community benefit. And maybe Gary can speak to that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was part of those amendments, since it wasn't explicitly stated.
I think that's an important one, where, and I support it strongly, where is that? Like, how is that baked in?
Where?
That is the Second Amendment on the Chapter 59 ordinance.
It was just deleted, right?
Right, it was just deleted, so you won't see it in strike. It was, I think, Item J.
Do you want to see Gary's memo? Have you seen it?
I get, well, what I would like to see is just, because I can, I see some faces out there, they're very familiar to me, who were advocating for the removal of the two-night stay minimum. I just want to know, language-wise, for this proposal, where that is, to make sure it's there, so that they don't get, you know, bamboozled, you know? They were upset, they'd been asking me for months to remove it. I'm glad Councilman Stonecifer proposed it, I just want to make sure it's legally there.
Yes, it is there. If the ordinance amendment, the Second Amendment for Chapter 59 were to get approved, that is one of the amendments that is appro-
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, then, we'll bring up the citizens. Gary Jones.
Gary Jones, with the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Association of Realtors, 3131 Northwest Expressway. Mayor Holt, council members, thank you so very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to make this quick and fast. First, our biggest concern, Councilman Stonecifer has presented, based on the presentation from the municipal councillor concerning his amendment, we are so good. In the email that we had sent, hopefully you received, we lifted up several concerns. One of our biggest ones is that we found in talking with our members, who were short-term rental operators and owners, that the flexibility that was needed in order to respond to the needs of families, emergencies, people that may come in for one night, was very important. It also aided them in their ability to be able to manage their home-sharing business for the year. And we also, based on information received from our National Association of Realtors, found out it did not solve the problem of big-time parties that most of the communities were concerned about. What I did want to do here is to let you know that we fully support this ADU ordinance, especially the way it's been revised. We want to thank the staff, when they submitted the proposed changes, we submitted it to our national research organization. They felt that best practices were utilized there. We then had a couple of changes, one once again was the two nights, which, again, you've got an amendment on, so we feel very good about this ordinance. But we did want to lift up one more thing that we feel needs to be addressed, that's not addressed in the ordinance, and it's enforcement. If you don't come up with a real enforcement mechanism, we really haven't done the work. And our members wanted to make sure that they said very loudly and clearly that they're committed to enforcement, and even if it means increasing the application fee in order to help subsidize the cost of that, that they believe it's necessary, because home sharing is a key part of future economic growth in our city, and we need to do all that we can in order to continue that it becomes a part of our economic capacity and development. But we also know that if our community is not happy-
Thirty seconds, please.
-they're not happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Scarlett Lee Cow.
My name is Scarlett Lee Cow at 20 Northwest 13, and I'm here to help the city's staff and managers to, how to make this process more efficiently and- and more easier to use. So, on the 10% limitations of home, of home sharing in the neighborhood, it's going to be very hard to apply. When we have any proposal for law, for new law ordinance, would love to check all the parties, from the users, user ends, the neighbors, and also from the staff, to see how practical that process will be, and how much of the budget, or how to implement it. And we have been, our hosts here have been through a lot of meetings with the BOA, the focus group, the planning commissioners, and now with the city councils. So, the 10% is very hard to apply when the city development of housing is different in each district. Some of the district, or some of the world, will need more housing, so it's going to be harder to, to quantify that. Another thing that we propose from the host side is, we would like to make this extremely easy, so each host will apply for a professional license, and each house will nest under that license. So, basically, it's like a contracted permit. It's going to be easier for code of enforcement to know exactly which house is under which host that can comply to the complaints from the neighbors easier. I just sent out an email to a lot of staff and managers, like Lisa Maryland here, so we are here to basically want to voice our, our, you know, expertise in how to make this more practical, because the process for applied right now is very incumbent, very paper-heavy, and even the, each department, they don't know which number to talk to, and we even don't know what is our license number, so it's very hard to keep track. So, we would like to propose the new process, and hopefully that you can listen and see that we can apply it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Tran.
Hello, Council, thank you so much for your work today. Nick Tran, 1216 Northwest 34th Street. So, Scarlett gave a good talk about the, the problems in the process, but I want to expand upon that a little bit more. So, the process is just very, I've sent emails about it, it's very cumbersome from the application stage, getting the special exemption, and even on the back end. To give a specific case, I have my special exemption approved on June 20th, and here we are in December, I still haven't received my business license with the correct dates. I have about 10 other applications with the incorrect addresses, with the incorrect expiration dates, with the incorrect names of the host on there. So, it's hard to force more hosts to get into this process, when the process itself is just not working as it stands. We've had many, many meetings for months about how we can streamline this process, we've talked to city staff about this. You have most of the tools already bigged into your websites, in the, in the permitting portal, you already have all of those processes there. You can just apply that into the special exemption, Board of Adjustment approval for your home-share license. That should be a very easy streamlined process to do, and we've been talking about it for months, but it, it's gone nowhere. And then, also, I want to bring up a point about the amendment that was brought up, thank you so much for striking the, the two-day minimum, but the other process I want to bring up is the occupancy limits. I think those are extremely important, like you said, I think those are probably better at addressing the parties. 16 cap is good, and the, I really like the calculation of times two, number of bedrooms, plus two, I think that's a very appropriate rule. But I think what's important to notice is that the Board of Adjustment is not going to follow that rule, they're going to rule on what they subjectively think on the property. But I think, to be more fair to all parties, is if you're going to apply that rule to, to the business license, it should apply to special exemption, it should apply evenly across the board. So, if there's a three-bedroom home, they can host up to eight people, so that they can have their kids come and play, and those kind of things. The Board of Adjustment shouldn't be able to say they can only host four people, in violation of what you guys are proposing today. And then, the, the second part I want to bring up was kind of hidden in the text, and a lot of the staff and other people actually don't even know about this in the ordinance, is the 10-night maximum per month that was added to the ordinance. I don't know when, that was like, the last session it was added to the ordinance.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. And I don't know when that was added, but I think that is a, not a good, not a good change. I think it's going to affect a lot of hosts. Like, for me, I just traveled to Vietnam for a month, and I wouldn't be able to Airbnb my home out during that time, because I can only do up to 10 days. Or if a family travels for two weeks, they can't Airbnb their home out for those two weeks. So, I don't know at what part that was added in there, but I, I think those are some options you should reconsider in your final approval. Thank you so much.
Thank you, that concludes the residents who signed up to speak. Is there any further comment or question before we start voting?
Yes, this might be a staff question to, it is definitely a staff question to address. Would you, would someone be able to speak to, I'm going to sound like your favorite conservative council member right now, but the streamlining of the bureaucracy, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, cutting the red tape, I think they call it. What, what is our plan for revision?
Hi, Aubrey McDermott, Assistant City Manager. So, there are a lot of things that we can do administratively to streamline our processes, and, believe it or not, just the home-sharing application process isn't the only thing that we believe we can have better administrative processes for, so we're looking at different technology and systems that are going to help with that application and notification. For example, if the Board of Adjustment approves a one, two, or three-year special exception permit, that applicant has to track that expiration, and that's a difficult thing sometimes. I think city, city processes can help with notification through software. So, we're exploring some of those things right now to make improvements with our communication with applicants. And Scarlett Cow had sent an email with some suggestions about how to nest applications that we'll explore and look into, but I think there are a lot of process improvements that we can do that wouldn't require an ordinance change, it wouldn't require hiring a consultant or any other type of specialized technology, we can just make those improvements. So, we really do appreciate when a user comes to us and explains some of those processes that have been cumbersome for them, and we're happy to look into making those changes as fast as we can.
I think that's wonderful. Would you all, whenever that happens, when that administrative reform kind of happens, would you be able to let us?
Update, sure.
Yeah, and, and in terms of timeline, just hearing what Nick was saying about the, what's it been, six months, just...
Sure.
I would imagine on the other end of six months, it'd be helpful to be able to have something in place, but...
Yes, absolutely want to look into that and see what happened, because there, there shouldn't be a lag like that for somebody who comes in to go through all the steps to get all the approvals that they need. So, we'll, we'll break that down, figure out what happened, and got his contact information, and already sent some texts to staff to look into that.
So, just that I'm clear, Aubrey, you all are going to talk to the gentleman that just spoke?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, already have.
And then, yeah, y'all have been talking, and then, do we have an update? I, I feel like we've had a bit of a conversation about this, but being, to Gary's point, the enforcement, do, do we know where we're at now? Of course you do, where, where...
Aubrey can give a quick update of where are the RFP?
Right, our Office of Innovation, Kelly Williams, has been working on an RFP for a consultant, exploring lots of different types of software packages that are, that are built to do this work. She has an RFP going on the city council agenda for December 31st. I imagine that, that will be a pretty quick turnaround, because a lot of the companies that offer these services have already been made aware that this is coming, so we expect that we'll get some applications that we can review and get back with council in a matter of a couple of months with a proposal to move forward. And that, RFP is going to be open to all the different types of services that these companies could provide to Oklahoma City, we'll customize that and look at what we need to do, and come back with a proposal to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Your Honor, would it be okay if I make a motion at this time?
Sure.
Okay. We're, we're on, uh...
What about, I'm sorry, Councilman, we were just wondering, so, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but the 10-day restriction...
Can somebody from staff speak to that?
Lisa Cronister, Assistant Planning Director, the provision in the ordinance is that if you are, if you rent your home more than 10 nights a month, you have to get a special exception, because, and that was a, an amendment made by the Board of Adjustment, their feeling was that if your house is rented for, if, is home shared for more than 10 days a month, that it's not actually occupied, it's not resident occupied, and that it should follow the process for non-host occupied homes.
So, they can go beyond the 10 days, they just have to get a special use permit?
Correct.
Okay.
I saw a lot of fun looks on faces, what do you all make of that?
Well, so, I'm, I'm hearing that if you, if you already are getting the special exception because it's not your primary place, or, yes, that...
Correct.
Okay, you're reading my mind, because I can't get it out, but that, if you're, if you're wanting, if you have the, like, idea that maybe you would use your primary place of residence for a longer-term hosting situation at some point, you would need to go through that special exception, because we have that process?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And, and that was in the ordinance as it was introduced in November.
So, is that per occurrence? Or is that at the time of the initial application?
It's tied to the property, right, the special exception?
It's an individual's decision. Like, if he wants to go to Vietnam for two weeks, or three weeks, or four weeks, to do that beyond 10 days, he'd have to have a special use.
Special exception.
Say, "special exception," excuse me.
Again, though, is that going to be per occurrence, like, when they want to rent that out, or is that going to be at the time, whenever they ask for the, the, or do they have the application to even be an Airbnb host? Because that sounds like a logistic nightmare, that we're not going to be able to enforce.
Correct, it would be complaint-based if residents observe that a home in their neighborhood is being, is often being rented for more than 10 days, and they don't, per month, and they don't have a special exception, then they would contact Planning or Development Services, and we would contact the owner and advise them to come in for a special exception. But the special exception is granted on a term for at least a year, perhaps more.
Sounds like we're setting ourselves up for failure.
Well, and I think, Nick, would, I think both of you right now, is there a way, if you want to come speak, Nick, is there a way in terms of the process? I hear what you're saying, Lisa, I, I, yeah, I'm wondering, is there a way, kind of in the way that Scarlett earlier was describing, you know, okay, I'm, I have, you know, five Airbnbs, so I clicked that right at the start of the application process? Is there some way in the process where, you know, oh, I'm going to be gone for, I anticipate that I'm the sort of person who might be traveling and gone for 10 days or a month, so at the start of the process, in the very start of it, as opposed to what Councilman Carter is talking about? I do think that is a worry, that, oh, no, I'm going to be gone for 14 days, I have to run down to City Hall to go let them know. Do you follow what I'm saying there?
Yeah, yeah, I follow. So, you're, you're saying, can we do it on the front end? That, that's true, you could, you could elect that on the front end, and like, get this special exemption to start out, but I also rent out rooms in my own home, personally, while I'm here, to help pay for my mortgage, so then, I would have to apply for a special exemption, and the other people would have, if they rent out, like, the mother-in-law suite, or their garage apartment, or any of those kind of things, they would all, now all have to apply for a special exemption, and there'd be even less, there would be pretty much no primary hosts anymore, in that sense, like, primary resident, you know, living in there, they would all have to get special exemption, if they are renting out their garage apartments, their mother-in-law suites, their basements, those kind of things. Because that's, that would be considered on the parcel of the property, and then they would go for a special exemption.
Special exception, yes.
Special exception, yeah.
But I'm hearing that, that's if they intend to rent it out for more than 10 nights at a time. They would own, that mother-in-law suite would, and so, I think it still sort of addresses some of the same concern that if you're wanting to do that for longer, this, there's some desire for the city to understand that that's happening in a different way than short-term rentals are meant to operate, which is shorter-term.
Yes, the Board of Adjustment, this was their proposal, because they and staff, a lot of the updates to the ordinance are trying to get at, you know, proving if it's a primary residence, and, you know, what, you know, what is the proof? Is there a, the board felt there was a, a time limit to that, the board felt that you had to actually be staying in your property for X amount of time during a month to qualify as your resident, so that was where that amendment came, came from.
Which, we totally understand, we were there at the meeting for Board of Adjustments when they discussed this issue, but, like I said, I rent out rooms in my own home, and so now I've had to get a special exemption, just because, even though I'm living there with the guests, and I, they bring them into the home, I would have to get a special exemption. And there's a ton of other hosts, too, out there that rent out, I know one of the, Eric Casper, he was one of the prominent voices in the Airbnb community as well here, he rents out an apartment in the back of his house. It's still on the property, still on his parcel, he's there every day, but now he would have to get a special exemption as well, even though, you know, he lives there, too.
I don't know what to do.
I mean, I, and this is just my opinion, but I'm sort of fine with that, because short-term, like, I think if you're going any longer than, and this is a number that came from Board of Adjustment, it makes some sense that this is becoming long-term rental. And so, that's, that's just my thought and opinion, I, so I'm sort of fine with keeping that in there, it from, but, again, that, that, that's just, that's how I'm sort of processing it.
For me, it's a monitoring tool for the Board of Adjustment, it's something they want.
Yeah, I think so long as there's clarity in terms of the initial application and the amendment process, like, if someone finds out their situation's changed, where they're going to be needing this, I think in terms of the streamlining process that we were talking about earlier, I think there needs to be just that clarification of, like, do you anticipate this? And I think that needs to be kind of prominently something that when someone is making the initial application, they need to be able to see that, and then there might need to, might even need to be a little bit of a drop-down, like, hey, and in the future, if this is something you do need to come back to make that request.
So, at this time, I would move to amend item number 11R. Specifically, the amendments would be found on the council agenda item at page two, and in the draft ordinance attached to the item. That would be my motion.
Is this, is this also just referencing R1, or is this something different? Okay. So, you're moving R1?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, maybe? Motion and a second, cast your votes. On the amendment found at R1. Passes unanimously. Now, we're at R2, this would be the ordinance as amended.
I would move for the approval of R2 with the amendment.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Now, we're at S1, 2, and 3. Would you like to move the amendments, Councilman Stonecifer?
I would at this time, move for the amendments.
So, we'll start with S1.
S1.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and now, S2.
I'd like a motion for S2 with the amendments.
A motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and now, we're on item S3, the ordinance as amended.
Move item S3.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now, we are going to recess for approximately 15 minutes and return, I'm not kidding, and return to... return to 1:05. What? No, scared it could be hard. So we will recess and return at 1:05, and pick up with item T at that time.
Right.
And we'll see you in 15 minutes. And most likely at that time, Vice Mayor Stonecifer will be presiding.
Okay, we're back from recess. It's 1:10 PM. The mayor had to attend to other business, so we will now go back to the agenda and we will start with item 11 T. This is an ordinance on final hearing relating to the general schedule of fees, amending Chapter 60 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code Title 38, Parks, Recreation, Cultural Affairs, et cetera. Has anybody signed up to speak on this, Amy?
No, they haven't.
All right. I'd entertain a motion as to item 11 T at this time.
T1.
T1. Thank you. The item passes. We now will go to item 11 T2, which is a resolution establishing the fees for the parks, facilities, and amenities. There being no one to speak, I'll entertain a motion at this time as to T2. Please cast your votes. It passes. We now find ourselves at Article 11 U, which is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on December 31, 2024, and final adoption on January 14, 2025. I think we have two people who have signed up to speak.
We have a quick presentation on this. Can we do that first?
Oh, sure. Okay, great.
So Lisa Kronister, our, no, that's okay, I'm sorry. Lisa Kronister, our Assistant Planning Director, will give us a presentation on accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
Thank you.
Good morning. Our Planning Director, Jeff Butler, sends his apologies. He got called to a 1 o'clock meeting, a pre-scheduled 1 o'clock meeting, so I'm happy to present to you about accessory dwellings. So first, you may be wondering what is an accessory dwelling? An accessory dwelling is a small secondary living unit located on the same property as a principal dwelling, and it contains provisions for eating, sleeping, and bathing. So if you're familiar with the term granny flat or mother-in-law suite, that's what an accessory dwelling is. So one reason we're talking about accessory dwellings is because of the housing need in Oklahoma City. What is the need? The latest statistics are that 77,000 households are cost burdened. That's just in Oklahoma City. Cost burden means that they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs, and both owners and renters are cost burdened. The lower your income, the greater your cost burden. Cost burdens are a direct result of low incomes and a shortage of affordable and available rental homes. And zoning is just one tool that we can use to address housing needs. By making the code more flexible, we can allow private development to do what it needs to do to generate housing, and best of all, that doesn't cost the city anything. So several studies in our own research include many recommendations about how to address housing needs, but four zoning code-related strategies were overwhelmingly consistent across all studies. One, allow for more than one dwelling on a lot. Allow for smaller homes. Allow for greater density, especially near jobs, schools, and transit, and reduce and streamline permitting costs and timeframes. These strategies are the basis for the Development Code Update Project, and all are addressed by the Accessory Dwellings Ordinance. Oklahoma's existing zoning code doesn't allow for more than one dwelling per lot in most neighborhoods, including R1 single-family. Therefore, we have to update our zoning code to allow accessory dwellings. So why would we want to allow accessory dwellings? The benefits of accessory dwellings are many and include expanding housing supply, existing, especially in areas where infrastructure, such as utilities, roads, parks, schools, transportation, and services already exist. It supports homeownership by providing homeowners with supplemental income from accessory dwelling rentals. The social benefits of accommodating multi-generational households and the ability to age in place. And accommodating the continued use and rehabilitation of existing non-conforming accessory dwellings. There is strong support for accessory dwellings in the city's comprehensive plan, Plan OKC. It is a policy, Plan OKC is a policy document used by city leaders, including council, to make decisions about the city's future growth, development, policy, and capital improvements, including land use decisions. Plan OKC policies recommend allowing diverse housing types and increased density in the urban core, and includes specific recommendations to revise the zoning code to allow accessory Accessory dwellings are not a new thing. They are an historic building form that exists all over the city, especially in the urban core, where they have long provided additional housing in residential areas. Allowing accessory dwellings by right in single-family zoning districts is one small step in the effort to increase housing availability and affordability. Many local and national studies, including the 2021 Housing Affordability Study and the 2020 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, as well as local and national interest groups, are unanimous in recommending that zoning codes be modified to allow accessory dwellings. Many of our peer cities now allow accessory dwellings by right, including Nashville, Minneapolis, and San Antonio. Locally, Norman and Edmund have recently revised their zoning codes to allow accessory dwellings in some areas. In 2022, as part of the code update survey, we asked the public about the types of houses people would be interested in living in or next to. And of those surveys, from the code update survey, 85% of residents say they would be fine living next door to an accessory dwelling. 65% supported accessory dwellings in their neighborhoods. Support for accessory dwellings is also evident by the number of rezoning requests over the past several years that have sought to allow accessory dwellings. Because accessory dwellings are not allowed in the zoning code right now, rezoning is the only way a property owner can get approval to allow one. Because accessory dwellings are recommended by Plan OKC policies and supported by best practices, survey data, and other studies, planning staff considered them early in our work to develop proposed new zones in the urban medium land use typology area, including allowing them by right as attached or detached units. We presented this concept to focus groups, planning commission, and the stakeholder advisory team at several meetings in 2022 and 2023. So now some details on the proposed ordinance. The proposed ordinance would allow accessory dwellings in the urban medium and urban high land use typology areas if they meet certain conditions. So we're talking about the area in tan here and the dark brown, essentially northern boundary of Northwest 63rd, southern boundary of Southwest 59th, and between I-44 and I-35. Planning staff has held a variety of outreach activities for the new code in which accessory dwelling concepts were discussed, including focus groups with residents, developers, realtors, architects. This outreach continued specifically regarding accessory dwellings over the past summer and resulted in additional ordinance provisions to address concerns. So the conditions to allow accessory dwellings, first, the site has to be zoned R1 or is zoned NC, which is neighborhood conservation, NC, R2, R3, or R4, but that is inhabited by just one single-family structure, and the ordinance does not include historic preservation or historic landmark properties. Only one accessory dwelling would be allowed per lot. It could be detached, detached, or internal. The maximum area, floor area of the dwelling is nine, would be 950 square The maximum height would be limited to the height of the primary dwelling, or 25 feet, whichever is less, except for existing garage apartments, which would be allowed to exist or be reconstructed to the height they currently are. Then the setbacks are as per the underlying zoning district, with some exceptions for existing non-conforming structures. All buildings and paving, including accessory dwellings, would have to meet the lot coverage maximum of the zone. For R1 and R2, that's 50% of the lot, so that's the maximum area of all buildings, all paving, sidewalks, driveways, patios. In terms of building design, rooftop decks would be prohibited. Second-floor decks and balconies would be allowed if they have privacy screen walls, and then manufactured homes are not allowed. Parking, most of the urban medium, virtually all of the urban medium, which is shown here in the green, is within walking distance, is within a quarter mile of existing or funded transit stops and existing or planned multi-use trail, bike lane, or shared route bike facility. So the parking requirement is if, you have to have onsite parking unless your, the street the property is on is greater than 26 feet, or if the accessory dwelling is larger than 600 square feet. And no new parking would be allowed in front of the principal dwelling. Home sharing. Accessory dwellings would be able to be used for home sharing if they're on the same parcel as the host primary residence, if the residence is occupied at the time of the rental, and if they get a special exception. So the special exception process requires public notice. Then the property owner, at the time they apply for a building permit to build a new or reconstruct, renovate an accessory dwelling, they would have to provide a sign on the property with a QR code and a link to the permit, online permit database, so that folks can see what is being planned. At the, at last week's December 12, Planning Commission meeting, well, to back up, at the November 14 Planning Commission meeting, that's where Planning Commission recommended this ordinance. One of their conditions on that recommendation was that the comprehensive plan be amended, that the boundary of the urban medium, LUDA, be amended to remove some neighborhoods that after further study from staff, we agreed that they didn't meet the pattern of urban medium. So Planning Commission recommended that the, that this ordinance not be adopted until the CPA was approved. That CPA is currently scheduled to be heard at Planning Commission on January 23. So next steps, this is the introduction. We're asking for a public hearing to be set on December 31 with adoption on January 14. With the planned action by Planning Commission expected for January 23, the council might wish to extend these, these meeting dates. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
You mentioned 950 square feet maximum. How did we arrive at that number?
I'm sorry?
How did we arrive at that number, 950 square feet?
That we looked at other accessory dwellings in the area that had been proposed. We looked at what other cities were doing, which were generally in the 1,000 square feet range. And that's, you can have the 950 as long as you meet that lot coverage requirement also.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? We do have two people that have signed up to speak, but does anybody have any questions?
I do. I am by no means against ADUs at all. I think they're a wonderful idea. Some of my concerns are the neighborhoods that have opted out. Not everybody in those neighborhoods wants to opt out. So we've got a neighborhood who's got an angry developer who lives there who doesn't want that in his neighborhood, but what are we going to do when that neighborhood's opted out, but somebody comes in and wants to do this, which leads to my bigger question is, this doesn't affect Ward 5 at all. It ends at Ward 6. But I've got a whole bunch of people who live on the south edge of Ward 5 on five-acre tracks who would love this opportunity. And so, which leads to my third point, by right, I see David Box having to fund his new business adventure, buying up five lots on a street, and all of a sudden he can put in 10 duplexes by right without any approval from anybody, regardless of what the neighborhoods say. So I think those are some things we really need to think about and talk about and work through before we take this a whole lot further, because ADUs are already allowed by a spud. It just costs a little more and takes a little more time, but anybody in the city can come apply for an ADU through a spud. So maybe we look at a spud light kind of thing where they still have to apply, you still have to notice neighbors. If staff can review it and there's no conflict and there's no people coming out to protest, then maybe it's just that simple. And if there is, then it turns into a real full-blown spud that has to go through Planning Commission. I mean, that's just a suggestion, and I don't have an answer, but those are some of my major concerns, is that, number one, my five-acre people have wanted this for years and have had to jump through hoops to get it.
Yeah, I'll respond to some of your points. For the code update project, we intend to study accessory dwellings all over the city. We just haven't gotten there yet because we started with the, with the urban core. So we, we haven't developed the metrics for some of the urban low in rural areas, but we do, we do want to study that.
But will that come soon or late?
We're, we're working as fast as we can on it. The, you also had a question about the spud light. The, a key recommendation of the reports I referenced earlier was that development, development be allowed by right, because even if there was such a thing as the spud light, you know, that still requires public notice, it still requires a public hearing, it still requires all these things. And a key provision was to remove the approval barriers. And what, we have years of data from spuds that have allowed accessory dwellings, and we took a lot of those provisions and embedded them in this ordinance, because we have previously heard what Planning Commission had recommended as being compatible in terms of size, height, parking, things like that, so.
And I'll just, I'll just add, just anecdotally, from my experience with ADU spuds that I've seen since I've been on council, I don't know if I've ever heard any protest. So I think that, again, that's anecdotal, it's not, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, that one time that someone did, but that, I think, I feel fairly comfortable and confident that if the provisions were written with some of those things, that sort of taking from sort of the, the conglomeration of what has been happening through the spud process, that especially as it relates to this iteration of just touching the urban medium, I've not heard a lot of, lot of opposition to that, that piece, so.
Lisa, could you speak to councilman's other concern, though, about, I believe the gentleman was Mr. Box?
Who opted out, and then, and you're going to have half the neighborhood that wants to opt back in. Do they have to now go through a spud?
Yes, so Planning Commission at their meeting last week heard from several neighborhoods who had presented petitions, and we analyzed what percentage of the neighborhood that represented, and it was a majority. We are concerned the extent to which quieter voices aren't heard. Again, that will be, that will be addressed further at the January 23 meeting at Planning Commission. And yes, if, if somebody is not in the area of, of, of this ordinance or if they've otherwise been removed, then their path to ADU is, is a spud.
Any other comments or questions?
This is more for legal, I think. Are we setting a precedence if we're going to allow people to opt out of a state, our city ordinance?
I, I think this is something that can be addressed, you know, on a case-by-case basis, just like, and this is part of the larger code update, essentially. So I think it's going to be part of a larger study. Yeah.
Well, I'm just, I mean, if we're actually, like, voting in and putting in an actual ordinance that's to be followed, but we're going to allow these people to opt out if they want, these people can follow it. they want, these people can follow it, are we setting ourselves up for any other ordinances that we try to do in the future for letting people just decide that they want to try to come in and argue that they want to opt out of it?
I do know, as being an HOA, former HOA president, that there are certain opt-in, opt-out ordinances, state statutes, like for mandatory HOAs, voluntary HOAs, and other things of the like. So I, I, I think that does exist by law.
And what about the neighborhoods that don't have HOAs? I mean, you have, there's a lot of neighborhoods in this, in these boundaries that don't have the ability to form a group and come be for or against this. I mean, it's just, there's so many, there's some, there's a lot of hair left on this thing that I don't see a clear path forward right at the moment. And once again, I'm not against these at all. I just think there needs to be some more conversation about how it's rolled out.
So I, I would also defer to staff because I think that this is part of a larger study with the comprehensive plan and how it is being applied and how we envision zoning looking going forward for the city.
Yes, and I would, so the, the ordinance as proposed, it identifies the areas in which accessory dwellings would be allowed by right per their comprehensive plan designation. And so the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015 and has been amended in various ways since then. But one thing that almost 10 years in needed to happen was a reconsideration of what were the, the boundaries. I mean, they were set for good reason 10 years ago, but, you know, staff believed that the edges of the boundary probably needed a little more study, and that is, that resulted in, in this map here. Further, this is showing just the northern portion of the urban medium. So even with removing these neighborhoods, for example, this only represents just, you know, a very small percentage of the entire urban medium. So a large swath of the urban core would still be under the purview of this ordinance. So from that, I just mentioned that as, even with removing some areas, we still have a very large portion of the core that could still benefit from accessory dwellings.
I've got a couple of questions. One, can we go back to the map that shows the area?
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, I thought, the big white spot there in the middle downtown?
Yes, so thi- this map is showing downtown amended, and then the, the white neighborhood, the, the blank neighborhoods north of downtown, that is HP and HL zoned properties. So that's Heritage Hills, Musta Park, Jefferson Park, Shepherd.
A lot of those areas, though, currently have ADUs, right?
A lot of them do. We met with the neighborhoods extensively, and they were not in favor of expanding accessory dwellings.
And then what is the process for me putting a ADU on my property?
In, in HP or HL?
In HP or HL? No, just anywhere.
Well, yeah, you would have to rezone, and you would have to go to Historic Preservation Commits, Commission for review against the HP guidelines.
No, I mean, like, if it's, one of our tan areas, right? I mean, what's the process?
Right now?
Yeah. Well, not right now, when we pass this ordinance.
After you pass this, you will submit for a building permit. Permit desk will check against the conditions of the ordinance, which are, you know, one dwelling, maximum height, maximum lot coverage, maximum size. They would check the parking requirement, and if you met all of those things, you would get a building permit.
Even if it's already built, you'll go through that process to get a building permit, right?
Correct.
And then we've got to go through the inspections and everything else on it, right?
Yes.
I'm curious as to why the neighborhoods that were built with ADUs in them already are not considered in this. Because once again, you're going to have people there that want to do this, but their neighborhood's automatically opted out. So they just have to go back through the SPOD process?
Yes.
And then there's nothing east of I-35.
There is, east of I-35 is the urban low. And between 235 and I-35 is urban medium. So that includes the neighborhoods around Health Sciences Center.
But anything that exists already is basically grandfathered in.
Correct. And if it's, if it's a structure that hasn't been inhabited or renovated in some time, the ordinance allows flexibility for setback and height to allow those types of structures to come in, to be rehabilitated without requiring variances.
Is that new? I've got a friend who lived at 15th and Walker. I mean, the house used to belong to this Anthony's family, the C.R. Anthony's family. He had a completely detached garage with a complete servants' quarters upstairs on that garage, and it was all in working order. There was nothing wrong with it. And when the Hornets came to town, one of the coaches lived there illegally. So there's where I'm getting at, is you've got these places that are already ready for this, but they're not allowed because just a few of the neighbors don't want it in their neighborhood. But my guy in 149th wants one and has to jump through hoops to get it. Or it, it's not fair, it's not equitable, there's, there's a disconnect here.
We, we started our study with the urban medium. We haven't gotten to urban low outside of the core. We met with HP neighborhoods and HL neighborhoods several times, and they were very clear to us that they did not want to be included.
May I? Before I get to the comments, which will relate to what you're saying, I'm going to ask a question. It's one I already asked you on the phone last week, but as a Paseo resident, who lives next door neighborhood-wise to Jefferson Park, which are two of the three historic landmark neighborhoods, to some of the other council members' notations, when the developers, and I don't think enough people watching or paying attention seem to be aware of our history. I am, and I love it. Those neighborhoods, as you all know, developed with the whole idea that the way that someone would be able to afford that home was by having an accessory dwelling unit behind it. This especially became more true after World War II, right? And so, right now, then, and by the way, this, this is why I get so passionate earlier. This is, this, this, what I'm about to say next is, is to me, the thing that haunts me in my dreams. I literally have a recurring nightmare about being priced out of my apartment. I worry every, almost every night that my property, the guy who owns my historic 1920s building is going to let someone purchase it, right, from under myself, my neighbor Liz, and Stan. And that is horrifying. That is horrifying. These ADUs in Paseo and in Jefferson Park that right now already exist, but are out of compliance. So someone who purchases a home in one of those two neighborhoods and they have the ADU behind it, they cannot bring it up to code to rent it out. I'm not even talking about home share, I'm talking about renting it out, right? Which means we've put an albatross around the neck of someone who, by the way, if you're a teacher or a firefighter, good luck even purchasing a home in Jefferson Park or Paseo right now. Just we're very clear, right? But the way they might have a fighting chance is if they could purchase a home with an ADU behind it and then rent it out. We're excluding that possibility. I believe Vice Mayor, you called this a few weeks ago, month, maybe about a year ago, we were having an annexation debate, the American dream homeownership. In other words, we are preventing my people, Ward 2, from having access to the American dream. I'm just going to be that blunt about it. What can we do to allow existing, I'm not even talking about new builds, I wouldn't dare, but existing ADUs? What could we do either in this moment or in between the larger code update to allow someone who owns a home with an existing ADU that is currently out of compliance to be able to bring it up to compliance? Before you enter, I'm sorry, this idea of continuing the SPOD process and the PUD process. Go back just a few minutes earlier, when you heard neighbors, a principal, that was not an uneducated woman, and her neighbors, they do not know what a PUD is. I did not know what a PUD or an SPOD was until I took office. I have three degrees. To ask our people, who nowhere in K through 12, nowhere are we teaching them how the city government works, no offense, City Manager Freeman, they don't even know where the city manager is. Do you see what I'm saying? This is not right. It's not right that a firefighter or a teacher has to learn the process. And how much does it cost? I heard at one of the Planning Commission's around $8,500 ultimately to go through hiring Mr. Box, hiring Mr. Zizo, the application process. $8,500? If you were to come take $500 from me right now, 500, hear me when I say that, 500, I wouldn't be able to do that. I don't know if my council members, I don't know if my colleagues understand that about me. Like, I understand I am a successful person, but I do not have $500 to just build something in my backyard, to, to go through the process of that. That's the burden we're putting on our people. I want to be very clear. So what can we do? I hear councilmen talk about a SPOD light. What, what could we do to help let people bring their ADUs up to compliance so that they can get that albatross off their neck?
Sure. Well, first, to be clear, if it's an existing ADU that's been operating and inhabited, I believe it could continue for some time. It's the ones that if you have a, like, my, my house, for example, I have a shop in the backyard, it's possible I could rehave it into an accessory dwelling, but I would have to rezone to do that. The, yes, we could, so, well, the purpose of the ordinance was to allow by right without additional time, process, or fees. That's the whole point. The, yes, we could meet with the HP and HL neighborhoods to, to talk about what provisions they would put in such an ordinance. We, staff thinks it would be these, be these provisions. So I, I am not sure. I mean, these are the provisions that we arrived at after a lot of public process, after looking at existing spuds and, that had been approved in the urban core over the past several years, looking at, you know, historic accessory dwellings that exist right now, looking what peer cities are doing in terms of size, parking, height. So yes, we could meet with the neighborhoods to go through. So far in our meetings with them, I haven't heard them articulate what they would change, but yes, we could.
I appreciate, oh, sorry, thank you. I appreciate that. Let me go further. I think it's important to have those meetings with the Jefferson Park Neighborhood Association and the Paseo Neighborhood Association. I want to be very clear. They do not speak for the majority of the people who live in those neighborhoods, because the majority of the people who live in those neighborhoods are my friends, who are working as baristas at Holy Rollers, who are working as, as servers at Frida, bartenders at Flamingo. In other words, what I am saying to you all, some of you have perplexed looks on your face, I am suggesting that there are people completely disconnected from their city government, from our city government. And why are they disconnected? I just looked up, just to make sure I wasn't wrong, but we know right now that less than five, 50% of Americans have $500 in their account for savings right now. That means that the worker at Frida's, the worker at the restaurants I just described that make up the Paseo, they can't come here at 8:30 in the morning because they're working. And they're not just working one shift at lunch. They work, they're off for the afternoon, they go back for the dinner shift. They can't stay here. You all think we're annoyed being here this long today? They can't be here at all. They don't go to neighborhood association meetings, not because they don't love the neighborhood. They don't go to the neighborhood association meeting because they can't go because they're working. My favorite barista at Holy Rollers is a single mother raising two or three children. She can't be here. She can't be here. This is madness, what we're, the decisions we are making that are disconnected from the everyday working people is absolute madness. And I, you can tell my patience is just gone now, because these are my people. These are really my people. And I think there have been a loud vocal minority speaking on their behalf. And I do not think that, you talk about fairness, that's not fair. That's not fair. And I share your concern, both Councilman Stone and Hinkle. I think there needs to be a very serious conversation heading into this next round, and it sounds, I think staff's heading in this direction, with the HPs. There are existing, existing accessory dwelling units in the HP neighborhoods. Where do you think we got these ideas? It's wild to me. And they're going to speak for everyone in those neighborhoods. And even the worker, there are people making 100, 200, $300,000 a year who are living in those neighborhoods, who also do not have time to come to Planning Commission meetings or city council meetings, who support this but don't want their neighbors mad at them. That's wild to me. And so I'd like to know, like, I think Councilman's SPOD light process might be a way for those HP neighborhoods. You know, if someone does want to go through that process of either bringing one up to code or building one, we've got to, we've just got to figure that out. I, I just think it's, I think it's wrong. I think it's disconnected from the housing crisis we're facing in this city to, to, to not try and bring these HLs up to code and to not try and help our people, our teachers, our firefighters, have access to the American dream. I...
Think we can send this back to the drawing board a little bit?
I'll send it all the way back.
I think you just gave staff a heart attack.
Yeah, they, yeah. Councilman, they've worked so hard, maybe it's time...
I'm just wondering where you're going. I'm with it.
I think it's probably time for, I've been at this table for a minute, for a minute. I am obsessed. Because these are not just my constituents, they're my friends. I am obsessed with keeping them from being priced out of the urban core and the neighborhoods that they love. I think it's time for us to start writing down what sort of amendments we would like to see. And I didn't know until today, Councilman, that you have a vision of ADUs out there. I'd love to champion that with you. I think it's time for us to add, but I don't think we should be deferring this for, like, six months or something. I, I think there needs to be a plan of when we're going to be able to add these ideas. I don't think it should be much longer than where we are right now. And quite frankly, as I have been saying from this horseshoe for a very long time, this needs to be communicated as part of a bigger vision about creating a revolving loan fund, because this is not even close to the magic pill. We need to be talking about building infill. We need to be talking about training our people to be able to be the ones doing infill development. We need pre-approved plans that match the architecture of these HP neighborhoods, HL neighborhoods.
Did I hear a motion in there?
Actually, I would like to make a motion to defer it for two weeks.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Very quickly, as another alternative to deferring it two weeks, Lisa mentioned that Planning Commission's going to be considering those modifications to the LUD boundary on January 23rd, correct? So if the modification of those boundaries, which impacts where this ordinance would be applied, is another concern of yours, you may wish to talk about the ordinance and adopt the ordinance after that meeting date, to give staff an opportunity to talk to them about the council discussion, to reengage with some of the neighborhoods that were proposed to be exempt from this. So you could defer this for a couple of weeks, or you could set a date in the future to come back and consider it after the Planning Commission convenes?
Why don't we defer it to...
Why don't we defer it to February 11th? And that, that way we can get their additional input.
Defer the introduction?
Yes.
So we'd come back and do introduction and still have the regular process?
Yep.
Yes.
And then, um, and this might be also a question for Amy too, to help us talk through this, since the introduction is happening today and really it's a public hearing and then an adoption, could, could that be an alternative too, so you don't have to repeat the introduction of the ordinance? Does that matter?
Actually, I would like to repeat the introduction.
Okay.
Piece of it. I, I just, I think it, once we see what changes are there and then we introduce it, it'll give us a lot more time to come up with some insight, maybe.
So we have a motion to defer until February 11th?
Yes.
All right. Do you want to make the motion?
And, and...
Hold on.
Vice Mayor, I know that there were a couple people signed up that would really love to speak, and I, I don't know if that's something that would impact your decision to defer.
Todd, is it okay if they speak?
Do what? I'm sorry.
People that have signed up to speak, is it okay if they speak today?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah.
We'll take up your motion in a minute. Landry, I guess Gary had to leave?
Yeah, Gary.
You're on next, sir.
Jessica first.
Okay, sure, sure.
Sorry, I just ran here from my kitchen.
Thank you, Jessica.
Literally ran here. I'm still out of breath. Jessica Thompson, address is 1414 Northwest 14th Street in Oklahoma City. I live in Ward 6. I, in fact, do not have a garage apartment, but I wanted to speak to some points. First off, going back to the presentation, it had a slide where it said that if you have a minimum, the 25-foot slide requirement on that one. Currently, I have a single-family house, so the height of detached accessory dwelling units limit to height of primary dwelling or 25-foot, whichever is less, exceptions for garage apartments. So I currently have a two-car garage now. As this sits right now, I would not be able to build a garage apartment because that would exceed that 25-foot limit. In order for me to be able to do that, I would have to add on to my house two stories in order to be able to build that. And so I would encourage you all to relook at that and change that because that means a lot of our single-family units are, will not be able to do that. We are excluded from this very, um, building siding and massing.
How many feet would you recommend?
I think what it needs to say differently is 25 feet minimum, because at 25 feet I could do it. But my, because my single-family home now is less than 25 feet. So if there's a way that we could, and I don't know if maybe that was done to appease HP neighborhoods, but seeing that as they're excluded, I'm not sure.
Sorry, um, yes, um, early drafts of the ordinance allowed you to have a two-story up to 25 feet because we determined 25 feet is the minimum you need for a reasonable two-story. Planning Commission felt strongly enough that it needed to be limited to the height of the principal dwelling, and so they amended. This includes, the ordinance you're seeing includes their recommendation. But for the reasons that Jessica just mentioned, staff had originally proposed allowing a two-story.
And we have a lot of homes in Ward 6 and throughout that already have, that are single-family, that already have garage apartments. I've sold a couple in Gatewood and in the Miller neighborhood as well. Um, I also wanted to bring up some points about parking. Um, I think this was discussed probably at a meeting, but we get a lot of pushback on parking. And I wanted to talk about how historically that has been used to oppose building accessory dwelling units across the country, cities all over. And I want to make a note that, you know, a family of four with multiple drivers and teenage children may have three or four cars parked at a single-family home, yet this is not deemed problematic under current zoning ordinances. So I would propose to remove, I would hope that you all would consider proposing to remove the parking, um, as we're looking at the comprehensive plan anyway, moving forward, they're looking at parking as well, and I think that it kind of interferes with those future decisions that are coming up.
30 seconds remaining.
Another part of that is, you know, exclusionary zoning, which is what we're doing by allowing these random neighborhoods, maybe not random, but certain neighborhoods, by excluding themselves from this ADU ordinance in the Luda. What it does is it impacts certain groups and may violate federal fair housing regulations, particularly if it creates barriers to affordable housing or segregates housing opportunities. So I would urge the city to consider the risk of lawsuits from advocacy groups and residents who argue that such actions violate housing equity principles and federal fair housing laws. And to know, I'm very glad that you brought up that, um, in these HP areas, that is where accessory dwelling units derived from, and it doesn't make sense to take that away. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, Landry, are you ready? And while Landry's walking up there, Lisa, I want to thank you for a great presentation today. Outstanding.
Landry Willis, 301 North Walker Avenue, and I do government affairs for Oklahoma City Realtors. First, I just want to thank staff. They've been wonderful throughout this process, and I really appreciate all the work they put into this ordinance. And Oakmar Oklahoma City Metropolitan Association of Realtors fully support the ADU ordinance. Allowing ADU by right is good policy. It supports private property rights, addresses missing middle housing, promotes aging in place, provides affordable housing, promotes independent and dignified living for people with disabilities, and offers numerous other benefits to residents. We are eager to work with the city council to get this ordinance across the finish line. The process to reach this point has been long, and I'm sure you guys have caught on to that, and many compromises were made at the Planning Commission to get here. And some of these compromises go against best practices, and we urge you to reconsider them. First, as Jessica mentioned, is the parking requirement. Many experts call parking requirements for ADUs a poison pill. This requirement adds an extra layer of costs and bureaucratic hurdles for homeowners wanting to build a back, an ADU in their backyard. There is a persistent myth that once this ordinance gets passed, it will lead to an explosion of ADUs, causing increased traffic and congestion on neighborhood streets, hence the justification for the parking requirement. However, this is not the case. There has never been an explosion of ADUs in any city. Analysis of permit applications, talking to my counterparts across the nation and city staff across the nation, there's never been any evidence of an explosion of ADUs. Moreover, people who live in ADUs, such as disabled individuals, seniors, or those residing near public transportation, do not drive or own vehicles. Adding parking requirements not only burdens homeowners, but also fails to account for the realities of ADU residents. Another compromise that was made at the Planning Commission was the exclusion of historic preservation and historic landmark districts. From the area that ADUs would be allowed by right. These are some of the most unaffordable part of our city, the most desirable part of our cities, where ADUs originated in our cities. Allowing ADUs by rights in these areas would provide affordable housing options for retail workers, bartenders, and servers, and others who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford to live where they work. While we share the goal of preserving the historic character of these neighborhoods, the Historic Preservation Commission does a great job of protecting these...
30 seconds remaining.
Yes. Does a great job of protecting these areas with strict guidelines for any structure built or brought up to compliance, and provides public hearing for nearby citizens so they can voice their concerns. Requiring a certification of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission in addition to a spud to change the zoning as an, as an expensive and time-consuming step, further exacerbating the affordability crisis in these districts. We respectfully ask that you reconsider these requirements and also vote yes in, in the ordinance when it is brought up to you. And I know you guys have been here late, and I just want to add one thing personally. I think the, the step of changing the Ludas that happened at the last Planning Commission meeting is a very dangerous and slippery slope. While it may not be politically feasible to put these neighborhoods in the area, in the areas where ADUs are allowed by right, we know the zoning and coding update has different guidelines and regulations based on the Luda. So changing the Luda just to get out of the ADU ordinance can set back a neighborhood or an area decades based on the different guidelines and regulations.
We really appreciate you being here today.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
All right. We have a motion and a second to defer this until February 11th, specifically deferring item 11U till February 11th. Please cast your votes.
It says January 14th on this deferment. Mine says January 14th.
That's, that's the final adoption. That's the all-final adoption. It's been a long day.
Yeah.
It passes. We're now at item 11V, which is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Amy, has anyone signed up?
No, they haven't.
All right. Let's move to item V2, which is the resolution. I'll entertain a motion at this time. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. It passes. Next, item 11W, which is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Has anyone signed up?
No, they haven't.
We'll move to item W2, 11W2. I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. It passes. We next turn to page 15 of the agenda to item 11X, which is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings.
No one's signed up.
All right. Then we'll move to 1110-2, which is a resolution declaring buildings are abandoned. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. It passes. We're now at item 11Y, which are claims recommended for approval. There's no need to go into executive session today, so I need a motion, please. We have a motion and a second. It passes. We now find ourselves at item 12, which is comments from council. Board one.
I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, and, you know, it's been an honor being here and enjoying this. I look forward to the next few years.
Board two?
Yeah, I just want to clarify some earlier comments. When it comes to our historic preservation neighborhoods in Ward 2 and accessory dwelling units, there needs to be a very serious conversation with the associations, but there needs to be some requests for, for input from residents who do not normally attend those neighborhood association meetings. I don't have quite the entire answer. I wonder if it's as simple as putting a flyer on people's doors and letting them know. But let me also remind everyone this, and there are a lot of people who, even with the flyer, will not be able to attend and kind of just trust that we, as a body, will just do the right thing. And that's, actually, a lot of people don't participate in voting or government period because they're just like, they just go along because they have work and they have families. I, I wish it were different. I do. But I just want to make sure we all know that there are a lot of people who I think voices need to be at the table, who I think will actually be difficult to get them at the table. With the HPs, I think one of the most important things is bringing people like my bond advisory representative, Lindsay Peaver, to the table, current Edgemere Park Neighborhood Association president, reasonable, thoughtful, and engages with residents. And here's all sides, and so I want to make sure she has a, a seat at that table whenever we do that outreach. And I think one of the things that will help the HPs at the later point, I don't think that, I, I understand at this moment we're not going to include them, but at a later point, when this is the bigger conversation, I think, and I share this concern, a lot of my HPs and a lot of my neighborhoods generally are just terrified, as you've heard me say previously, that some, and it kind of speaks a little bit to what Councilman Hinkle was talking about, they're worried that someone from out of state, out of city, is going to come in, purchase their homes, purchase these duplexes, fourplexes, tear them down, build something much bigger and much more unaffordable and much more characterless, something that does not speak to the harmony of Putnam Heights, of Edgemere Heights, of Heritage Hills. And I think we have to balance those concerns because I share that concern. I see in Helm Farm, where people just come in, gobbled up homes, and just built the most ugly, unaffordable things that no firefighter on God's green earth would ever be able to afford. And I just don't think that's right, and neither do a lot of my residents. So I just wanted to say, as we head into these HP conversations, that we've got to be very mindful of the protections that I know they're going to want and that I, as their council member, am going to want for them too. And I think one way around that is by having pre-approved plans, like actual, and other cities have done this, there are pre-approved, we can make an inventory of architecturally harmonious buildings that fit the designs of Putnam, Edgemere, Crown Heights, you name it. We can do that. Heck, we can do that for even the non-HPs. There's no reason why we can't have structures in Military Park that don't look like Military Park that are new build. So I think that'd be part of my guidance. And I would encourage us, I'm glad we deferred this, but I would encourage us, as council members, to speak to, you just heard what my individual concerns are in Ward 2, but what are your individual concerns within Ward 5, within, you know, 1, 3, 4, et cetera? And, and bring those to the table. I, I just, I, I think that's going to be important. But I think finally, I think the day City Manager, that council hears this item again, and I've already suggested this to Planning, but it did not happen, I think Lisa did a wonderful job in her presentation, but we, as a city, might have a renewed responsibility to remind people what the whole housing crisis looks like in this city. How many units were short? What the need is. Who it is in our own city who need this housing, right? I think some people think that it's people who aren't from Oklahoma who are in need of this housing, and they don't know that it's their neighbors who are teachers and firefighters. They don't know that. And so we need to make sure that we are educating them. We need to make sure we are educating them on how much a one-bedroom costs to rent right now. We need to tell them what our bigger plan is in chapter six and seven of our Affordable Housing Study, which lays out affordable housing recommendations for our bond. We need to give, in other words, people the holistic vision that the city of OKC has that says, here's how we're going to make sure that you have a home as you are working, right? And for those of you who absolutely cannot work, we will figure that out for you, right? But we need to give a holistic vision because right now people are intervening and saying the ADUs do not address our, the totality of our housing crisis. They are correct. So let's explain to them how we're going to address the totality. And I think we got to do it all at once. We have to walk people. Lisa's already done a great job today through part of it. I think we can do more. The only other thing I have to say is a thank you to City Manager Freeman and to Councilman Carter, Laura, John, over in the audit office, who attended the Full Circle book reading that we had, standing remotely. What a way to end the holidays, of go into the holidays, but to end the year. I really appreciate you all and your support there. And thanks for hearing me on topics like housing and education, which are so near and dear to my heart. Happy holidays.
Board three?
Thank you. First, James, sign my book before you leave today after audit. Yes. Finally, I had to, it was an effort there, very hard to come by and very popular, so nevertheless. Next thing, just want to appreciate House Representative newly-elected Emily Geis and Councilmember Matt Hinkle. Appreciate your inclusion on the ODOT conversation with Tim Gatz, Monty, and a slew of engineers regarding the bridge work at 119th and 134th and Interstate 44. The plan has been revised now, and so we are not going to be shutting down two bridges at one time that access, you know, tens of thousands of city residents. So there is more information coming from ODOT on that, I believe has been shared, and we will pass along and share with the residents in the area. So just want to express my gratitude for being included in that conversation. And then just Merry Christmas, happy holidays. I hope it is a peaceful one for you and yours and that you are able to spend it with those you care most about. Thank you.
Thank you. Board four?
I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Thanks everyone for the gifts received today. Very nice, very thoughtful. Also wanted to say thank you to the Oklahoma City Police Department and Moore Police Department for finding a stolen vehicle and making sure that it, it made its way back. So, thank you very much.
Board five, please.
Well, since he won, I will, I'd like to congratulate our fellow councilmen for the humanitarian award from Oakmar last week. Well deserved. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and thunder... Christmas, and thunder up.
Ward 6, please. Ward 7.
First of all, let me say, uh, thank you to all of you for all of your help, uh, and congratulations, uh,
To Councilman Carter, uh, for your appointment. I did know that, and, uh, good, good to finally meet you as, as well. Uh, so we're excited about that. Uh, just, uh, today, uh, thanks for the help on 2016. Uh, it is a difficult, difficult, uh, assignment. Uh, and so as you go to visit, uh, that property, uh, just take under consideration all of what, you know, has been said here today. Uh, and also, um, you know, how, how also to not, to not make, to see people when they actually come before council. Uh, one of, one of the, uh, neighbors that presented today was actually threatened, uh, to have the police to come and escort them out of the Planning Commission. And they were very offended, uh, by that because they were trying to get their point across. Uh, so as you, uh, think about people who come, uh, and they, they don't have the words, they don't know the lingo, they don't know the language, but they're trying to communicate specific messages of their concerns. And to be able to make sure that we always treat them with compassion and care, I think is, is crucially important. So, um, thank you all for being who you are. Let me say thank you. I didn't know we were supposed to bring gifts today, but when I got to my office, just full of gifts. Thank you. Thank you so very, very much. I don't know what I have to do to make up, but I didn't know we were bearing gifts. But thank you.
Yep. Thank you for your comments. Uh, we are now at item 14, which is adjournment, so we are adjourned.
They didn't report. They wouldn't be any comments.